August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the very body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
So we'll do Board Member Banning, who's absent, Board Member Munoz, Board Clerk Escobedo.
Here.
Board Vice President Alvarez.
Here.
Board President Sims Mountain.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon, absent. Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So today is a slight departure from the way we usually do things because this is a special meeting, and we are going to discuss things that are of mutual interest to us, which are, of course, our youth and opportunities for our youth to do things that are outside of the realm of academics, because we're not going to go there today. That's the school boards, businesses, and non-councils. So this will be an informational meeting for us all to do. So the way it's going to go is the staff is going to make a brief presentation. Members of the diocese up here will then have an opportunity to ask staff questions to those presentations, and then afterwards we'll entertain public comment. But once again, public comment will be restricted to the items we have on the agenda. So we're not talking about academic performance or district enrollments or any of those things. We're talking strictly about what we're going to talk about today as presented by staff. And then when we get back after public comment, it will come back to this board. There are no actual items, but we will have a chance to opine and give our own comments on each thing. I'm going to ask that we, due to there are so many of us, to try to keep it brief within about five minutes if possible. Is that possible for all you guys? Sometimes it's not possible for us, yes.
Oh, it's possible. We're gonna make it work.
It's possible, thank you. And then that'll be it. If there's not an action item today, then we will dismiss after that. So with that, I would like to begin the staff presentation, and that begins with Ms. Bjork.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council and members of the School Board. It's very nice to have you all here today and welcome. I am Rebecca Bjork, City Administrator, and I just wanted to thank you for being here. As you know, the city provides a broad range of services and responses to its community and its residents and its visitors, inclusive of all types of service. Our programs around youth, youth wellness, and youth employment are one of those, and it's an area where we have some overlap and co-interest with the school district. So we're very pleased to be here to talk about those areas of mutual interest with you today. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent Maldonado to make her opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bjork. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, Board President Sims Mountain, members of the City Council, and our Board Trustees, and all of who are here today. I am the proud superintendent of Santa Barbara Unified, and I am joined here today by some of my very talented cabinet members to inform you about many of the initiatives and opportunities for our longtime partnerships. As separate but intertwined entities serving the same community, this meeting is not only an important one, but a step toward creating a more unified community in service of our families, students, and citizens. Santa Barbara Unified School District is committed to serving the whole child, their needs, every chance, every day. We recognize the impact that family and staff have on the student experience. With that said, a meaningful partnership between families and staff, home and school, the district, and the community is vital to the success and wellness of our students. More than our difference, we have mutual interest to provide conditions for our students and the communities across entities, and more importantly, for our youth. We're going to highlight for you a few of those areas and efforts today, understanding that we have more work to do, and that work will be more impactful for our greater community if we align efforts and partner wherever possible. And as my colleague said, the areas that we agreed to focus on today are youth engagement, youth employment, and youth wellness. And in the words of Maya Angelou, "When we know better, we do better." And it is my sincere hope that after listening to both of our agencies' efforts and points of intersections, we can continue to grow stronger together. It is only through partnerships that we can achieve more. Thank you for having us here today, and I'd like to invite you for the next meeting to come to our school district. With that, I'll turn it back to my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maldonado. Ms. Zachary.
Mayor Rouse, members of the City Council, members of the School Board, my name is Jill Zachary. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. I'm kicking off this presentation, but it has been a work of many people from both the City of Santa Barbara as well as the school district to pull this together. So there will be five of us presenting to you. To my right is Molly Wetta, who is with the Library Department, and Chief Kelly Gordon from the Police Department. They will follow me, and then representatives, including Kenya Edison and Steve Vence, will come from the school district. We also have a number of staff in the audience that can answer questions if they come up and we need additional support. So with that, what we hope to do is give both bodies an introduction and background to the history of the school, district, and the city working together, what we currently do, what the city provides and funds through the General Fund primarily, what school district programs and services include, and then spend some time with discussion on that presentation as well as opportunities for further collaboration. The School Board of Education and the City Council used to meet on an annual basis, haven't done that since 2019, and we kind of all know why, but here we are in 2023, and it's a great time to turn a new leaf. So, as I mentioned, we have a long history of working together on youth programs and wellness. We've worked collaboratively on many different aspects, drawing from our organizational strengths and our broader missions. We recognize that we have, we both have critical roles in youth support and family support, including youth safety, most notably in the last seventeen years focusing on youth safety as it relates to the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership. Today, as was mentioned already, as we want to focus on how we continue to partner and enhance our services to youth, as well as our opportunities to work together. So starting with city programs, as I mentioned, I'm the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. We've been in a department since nineteen oh-two. Our mission is to provide clean and safe parks, beaches, and recreation facilities to enhance Santa Barbara's beauty, promote stewardship of urban and open space resources, support youth, family health and wellness, and provide quality recreation and cultural experiences and community services for all Santa Barbara residents. We essentially, as a department, played the primary role, working with the school district through our joint use agreements historically, with the first one established in nineteen eighty-seven, most formally adopted in nineteen ninety-one. The last time it was renewed, and for a period of time we renewed it on a five-year basis, was in twenty fourteen. It expired in twenty nineteen, and part of the challenge we all faced at that time is the onset of COVID and a lot of changes. Each year, the City Council and the School Board would also approve annual operating agreements as it related to youth recreation after-school programs, park ranger services. But essentially, the basis of that joint use agreement is that we have mutual interests in providing education and recreation services to residents of the community and the district. And it addressed a variety of aspects. It had to do essentially, even in the beginning, with joint planning and development of actual facilities on school properties and on park properties. That was quite some time ago, as you can imagine. The city has a fuel bay, so we have infrastructure that the school district is able to take advantage of and therefore not have to provide so much of its own. We have an annex yard similarly. I mentioned the park ranger program. Once upon a time, we also shared vehicles, and we had a vehicle agreement. That has also changed. And then after-school recreation programming and summer programming. You know, the basis for this was really that to better provide services to the community and to our youth, we had to work together, each one of us bringing a different set of facilities and resources to the table, and that we were able to leverage those as it was possible. So our annual operating agreements, we had a five-year overarching agreement, and then within that, each year we bring forward annual operating agreements. We've been providing recreation after-school programming on school campuses since nineteen ninety-one. We also originally provided the junior high after-school sports program, which has been in existence since nineteen eighty-seven, first operated by the city, and then it was transitioned to the Police Activities League right around the time we faced serious economic challenges, the city did, and now the district operates it, but the city contributes financially to it on an annual basis. Park ranger services have something that have been in place for many years, and those services are provided to elementary, junior, and high school campuses, depending on the day of the week and the time of the day, but it's essentially after hours. Once upon a time, we did also provide the AOK after-school programming under contract with the school district, and that collaboration ended in twenty nineteen for a variety of reasons and is still operated by the district. And then similarly, we also used to provide field scheduling for community field use of school campuses, and that continued until twenty thirteen. And for various reasons related to field maintenance, the transition of school sites to school principals, it became clear that it made more sense for that to no longer be a service that the city provided. In addition to the work that we've done on school campuses, we have operated our summer fund program, which started in two thousand and seven. It's a free eight-week program that is entirely funded by the city, and it originally started on three school campuses, focused for at-risk youth that had no ability to go to summer camp during the summer, but parents that still had to go to work. At one time, we served five hundred and sixty youth on three different school campuses. In this last year, we served, we had one location, two hundred and forty youth, and that was on the Franklin School Campus. And part of that has to do is it's a city subsidized, entirely subsidized program with small amounts of grants. We also provided free after-school sports for elementary school kids, and that was something the city funded entirely from the General Fund, where we actually bused kids from elementary school to city park sites in order to provide free after-school sports programs. That obviously went on a hiatus during the pandemic, and then we also ended that program this year, primarily due to financial reasons, but also transportation, moving children around is increasingly difficult and restricted, and then also finding coaches and hourly staff to actually provide those services. Because we had to take kids off campus in order to provide those services, it added a layer of complexity. There are other things that Parks and Recreation does to support youth. We have our youth job apprentice program, and that supports youth in high school. We have our youth culinary arts program, which also occurs in two of our community centers, the Westside Center and the Franklin Center, and that happens each school year, and it's an after-school program. We have an arts alliance program where we have kids who participate in painting and creating murals throughout the city, and we have three murals on city school campuses right now, which is a great collaboration that we've had as well. And then we also have our city council, city council-appointed youth council, and those are kids that are in high school, and we work very closely with the counselors on high school campuses. And then throughout the school year, we actually have kids that are in high school at Santa Barbara Unified that serve as counselors and staff for our recreation after-school program, working with older folks, and then throughout our summer programs as well, we provide job employment opportunities. Some of the things that we've been discussing as a group and would love to discuss more as we work forward is coordination with our after-school programs, knowing that there are different programs happening on different school campuses. There's AOK, there's recreation after-school that occurs now on four campuses that the city supports. Increasingly, we find ourselves stressed with the demand of the community for access for field space and open space, and we look forward to the opportunity to better collaborate in that area, too, since our sites are limited in terms of what we can support and what we're able to do. We also, both as two entities, need to generate revenue from our field use, and so looking at opportunities where there's more equity in terms of what the city asks for in charges and what the school district asks for in charges, so that sports leagues, both youth and adult, have a general understanding and sense of what's out there and what are the options, better communication and coordination. And then we've also talked more about how the city can help support high school volunteer opportunities and really create a more robust program there. One of the strengths of the joint use agreement, once upon a time, is that there were staff, dedicated staff from each agency, that were part of a joint use committee that met on a regular basis, because that's how work gets done, is when there's staff that are assigned to do the coordination and communication and find ways to work together. And then also where we've had more conversations with the principals at the very school level, because we know things vary from site to site with what principals do. With that, I'll turn it over to Molly Wetta, and she'll talk about library.
Ms. Wetta, and as I said before, we'll do questions, we'll let staff get through their entire presentation. If you guys just make notes of your questions, then we'll go on after that. Ms. Wetta, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and members of the School Board. First, I'd like to start off with an overview of the library's mission statement. We are dedicated to supporting education for all ages through classes and events, building a community of readers, and empowering individuals with free access to information and connecting people to community resources. And we also have an equity, diversity, and inclusion philosophy incorporated into our mission statement. So an overview of our current library and school partnerships. The library visits AOK after-school each year and provides two core functions. First is reading ambassadors. This is a three-session curriculum in which library staff go over a program to build readers that will go home and be ambassadors for reading to younger siblings or other children in the community. So fourth graders go through a curriculum to build their reading confidence and fluency, and then they have a graduation ceremony, which many of you are often invited to attend, where they certify that they will be ambassadors for reading in their community. We also provide science, technology, engineering, arts, and math activities, such as coding with robots or engineering challenges in after-school programs on a regular basis throughout the school year at the various sites. We also, as much as possible, try to be present at family engagement events at all of the school sites. That includes back-to-school nights, which we're already starting to get invitations to, science nights, or work with the other family groups within, to promote library services that support youth as well as families as a whole. So our adult literacy programs, we're often at the emerging multilinguals groups to connect them to other community resources so that they can be more active and engaged in supporting their students' academic achievement. We also, this is a part of our family literacy initiative, where we have programs throughout the year that support adults with being involved in their children's education and getting the education that they need themselves to be active participants, and includes one-on-one tutoring, Career Online High School, help with getting any sort of educational certificate or their citizenship exam, and English as a second language acquisition. We also have our OG readers programs, which works with children in first through fourth grades who are struggling to learn to read. This curriculum is based on an eight-hour training in the Orton-Gillingham Approach to Literacy Instruction, and this includes a multi-sensory approach that incorporates phonics. It's very similar to the Science of Reading curriculum and ties in nicely with that. We work directly with literacy coordinators and teachers in elementary schools to help them identify and refer students who would be of benefit to this, rather than advertising it to the general public. We currently are working with thirty-five student groups, student pairs, with volunteer tutors who have been through this extensive eight-hour training to work through that approach. We've also had, in addition to the tutors that work with students in our programs on library sites on a weekly basis, have trained numerous parent, grandparent, or other volunteers who work in, for instance, the United Way Fun in the Sun camps or their at learning centers. We've also worked with a parent group at Roosevelt to train all of them so that they're able to implement this in classroom, and it's definitely an area in which we could see further collaboration through this curriculum and this tutor instruction. We also invite the school district at the junior high and high schools to participate in Santa Barbara Reads each year, where we choose one book, and funded by the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation, distribute hundreds of copies in English and Spanish, as well as making them available on our digital platforms, and then have a month-long series of programs tying in to encourage conversations about issues that matter. And as part of that programming, we have distributed books in the schools for free, just complimentary, funded by the foundation, and also brought author visits to Santa Barbara High School, La Cuesta, and other sites, and collaborated on different initiatives with the teachers there to integrate those materials, to supplement the curriculum and sort of enhance in their classrooms. We also invite classes to do library tours and visits to their class to present on how they can take advantage of all that the public library offers them for free in their community. We also have the Student Success Card programs, where every parent or guardian has the option to enroll their kid in a Student Success Library Card, where their student ID number becomes a library card number, and they can check up up to three physical items and have full access to the library's digital platforms. This has been really well utilized, for instance, at Harding Elementary, where we visit with our library on the GoVan every Wednesday on early release day after school. We see a lot of circulation from those. And then certain junior high, especially, classrooms, their teachers have taken advantage of this, and especially using Hoopla, which allows free digital access to one book for all simultaneous use of the whole class to integrate in the curriculum. But there's, because it's an opt-in approach, and then also because we don't always have the best communication about the resource, or the parents don't realize that they've opted into it, it could be more fully leveraged, for sure. We also offer a summer reading program every summer, just to extend learning and to keep students engaged through the out-of-school time, and we've worked with educators to get their input on what is valuable in their classroom, especially at the elementary level, to approach it in a way that they can integrate it and invite their students to participate. We either visit their classroom and talk about the program at the end of every school year, or send a video that they can share with their class and home, just to encourage participation in reading throughout the summer. For team engagement at the library, we've been more robust in growing this over the last several years. At the Eastside Library, we have a teen advisory board, which they're able to participate in making decisions about teen programming at the library, get together and help support youth programming at the library, and build leadership skills and volunteer service hours. We also have teen volunteer opportunities. They can do drop-in service point hours at Central Library, and that's a very popular program, do virtual book review volunteer opportunities, where we post those to promote in our catalog, books that teens are actually reading and enjoying. And then we have several teens that, especially those who are interested in education as future careers, who have participated in our OG reader training and our tutoring younger elementary schools in that very advanced curriculum. We also have currently a grant-funded teen internship opportunity. Right now, over the summer, we had sixteen teen interns that were paid and went through a career development, as well as some financial education, some social-emotional learning, in addition to learning about various roles at the library. We've had a few on an entrepreneurship track. So that is something that while we don't think that we'll be able to continue to fund at the same level without grant funding, to have every summer a paid internship opportunity for local youth. And we also, through regular employment opportunities at the library, through the library pages or page apprentices, have employed local youth. So as I've mentioned, for some of the opportunities for our future collaborations would be Sora Access to Digital Books. Overdrive is one of the primary vendors for delivering digital content, and while in the public library, we use the Libby app, which has full access to everything in our catalog. The school district and many school districts on the central coast throughout California and throughout the United States have this app and allows them to control the content that is appropriate for school, that their students can access, and that would make everything that the public library has available easily accessible for classroom use or for supplemental, you know, independent reading to students through an app with more content controls than what the general public has. And would also allow the school district, if they would like, to invest in specific content to support the curriculum, but have it be a one-stop shop. We also see a lot of opportunity for the new campus upgrades at Harding on the West Side. As I've mentioned, we have historically offered stay, we have been delivering library services through the library on the GoVan to Harding weekly, and that has been very beneficial not only to the students there, but to the community members who don't enjoy a neighborhood library like they do on the West Side. And previously, pre-pandemic, we offered Stay and Play, an early literacy and family support engagement program onsite at Harding Elementary, as well as English conversation groups with parents there onsite for their convenience. They could drop off their kids at school, stay with their little ones for Stay and Play, and on a different morning come back and participate in some English conversation groups. So we see the possibilities there for collaboration as a unique opportunity to better serve that neighborhood. We also, as I said, where the invitations to events are rolling in, and more coordination or advance notice on this calendar of opportunities would allow us to more equitably participate and prioritize that in our work. So that's just as we move forward, an opportunity for growth. And then more coordinated support of the Student Success Cards, so that teachers and families can fully leverage that great resource. You know, for example, it You know, for example, a teacher training on how to use the resources and how to know if their students have access to those cards would take just as little as 20 minutes and make a big difference. Or quarterly marketing to parents about Student Success Cards, for instance, via Parent Square would be a great way to promote that. And with that, I'd like to thank you and turn it over to the chief.
Chief Gordon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, President Sinema. So, it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon and address both of the boards. You know, I've been here 11 months now. It's hard to believe that it's going on a year. But really, I have to say, before I get into my presentation, I really appreciate all of the collaboration between the superintendent and all of her staff, and I think just in the last 11 months, we've really grown in our ability to collaborate and working towards the success of our community, our students together, and really having a better understanding of both of our roles and how we can partner better. So, I just want to start with that, because, like I said, I think in the last 11 months, we've come a long way with that partnership and that collaboration, and I'm very appreciative of the school district and their staff. So, with that, let's see if I do this right. Oh, so you already went too many. So, I want to talk specifically philosophy and commitment. I'm not talking the overall department mission statement, but I'm talking about our philosophy and our commitment as to how we are directly communicating with the school district and how we're interacting with parents, students, teachers, and faculty. So, really, for us, it's about, we're committed to choosing intervening actions that are restorative piece, is really the focus, and looking for long-term problem-solving approaches. We're not looking for a Band-Aid, we're looking for longer term. And sometimes, that can have some pain points, because as we know, you know, that takes longer to work through, and more dedication and more resources. We want our community to feel safe and secure, which includes our students and staff in the classrooms, and we want to help, do our part to help our students be happy, healthy, and well-adjusted. So, our focus is not just on how we react to large-scale incidents or things that happen in the schools, but all of the little things as well that go into this. So, moving forward, as it is today, that is our philosophy and our commitment in how we are addressing and responding. So, when it comes to safety and wellness, we're really trying to make sure that we are sensitive to the learning environment with our investigations, how we approach and come onto campuses, and what those interactions look like. It is necessary for us to come on campus sometimes and do investigations, but we are trying to be sensitive to the learning environment and how we approach those. The collaboration and coordination, you know, we both have each other's cell phones as long as, as well as some of my other staff and school district staff, and we are in constant communication, one appropriate on the issues that need to be communicated about. We're trying to be good about letting each other know ahead of time and about addressing issues, you know, even all the way from controlling gossip and rumor, which, as we know, you know, can sometimes, when there's an incident on campus, grow legs very quickly. So, that early and communication, so that we can make sure the correct message gets out and address any of the concerns or the questions that come up, and being open and transparent about it. Like I said, the two-way communication, you know, we are getting better with our co-response teams in terms of mental health and making sure that we're working together with those resources and how we respond, sharing of resources and looking at what those opportunities are, and as of last week, even looking where we can partner in terms of training. Lieutenant Payne and Sergeant Brown were part and presenting with Kenya last week and the campus security assistants, and doing that at the beginning of the year and having questions answered, but specific curriculum and helping with that training is very beneficial. I know we're already talking about future collaboration and future training that we can do together. So, that's for the safety and wellness piece. So, as far as the police department and how we're interacting more on a daily basis with the youth in our community, that really, the biggest thing for us is our Police Activities League. That's been ongoing since 1999. It's taken different forms over the years, in terms of youth sports, not youth sports, and different, you know, focuses by PAL. But the biggest thing is, is that the ongoing efforts of PAL are to improve the quality of life for all the children in our community, and building that bridge between policing and the kids in our community, because it is absolutely 100% essential for the future of our community. So, some of the recent activities, just over the last 11 months, is a very successful summer camp. There are now memorial scholarships for college. It was a, I should know the number off the top of my head, but I don't, but I think we did 18 different scholarships, but don't quote me on that, that were given this year through this specific one. There is a Leadership Council that also participates in the city's youth council with city council. They've been very active. They actually just, the members of the youth council just went to Washington DC and have been doing more things and getting out there and getting more involved, which is fantastic. They just did the National PAL Youth Summit. They were just at Westmont for Life After High School Conference with about 120 youth from across the state that are part of California PAL. One of, I think, my officers' favorites is to go out fishing and enjoy, whether it's from the pier or whether they go out and do deep-sea fishing, providing experiences that most of these youth wouldn't have otherwise and exposing them. There's been surfing, there's the big community events that are the Trunk or Treat, which is a huge community draw, and Winter Wonderland, in which families are provided a Christmas that they would not otherwise have without the assistance of PAL. The Cops and Kids Camp, where typically for three or four days, they go up to a camp off of the 154, and officers along with PAL staff provide them with an opportunity to actually camp. And I will say, this year, I might have been the musical chairs champion at camp, so... But it's a great opportunity, and the reason I bring that example up is because it's participating in different activities, right? It's participating in a different way with the kids, breaking bread with the kids, but, you know, doing the Dance-A-Thon with them, doing the musical chairs, playing games with them, meeting them where they're at. And I will tell you, at least for me, and I say this to the kids, you know, if I'm having a bad day and I need to put a smile on my face, all I need to do is go visit PAL, because I get as much as we give to PAL. And I think that's true for all the officers that participate. PAL does tutoring, they do a lot of different programs, but that's the high level of some of the things that they do at PAL. We did a new thing. Over the summer, we did a week-long Discover Police Recruitment Experience. So, they got to actually go to the academy, they got to do some physical training, they got to have a great deal of accountability, and get exposed to what it would be like to be a police recruit. Now, the goal of this is not to turn them all into police officers, although I would love that, especially, we've been doing a lot of recruitment here locally in our community. In fact, four of the five that graduate from the academy in September all went to school in Santa Barbara. So, that's pretty amazing. But they get to see what that looks like and exposure to different leadership and life skills and different possibilities that they may never thought of. There's now students interested in ROTC, law enforcement, different careers, because they get exposed to all the different pieces. You know, they really, and the parents and the engagement was really spectacular. A lot of the students were even a part of PAL, and the survey and what came back from the parents and the students was really good, to the point where they're pushing us, they want it more year-long, they want it more times a year. They're pushing us to come up with the resources to do it more often. Really impactful for personal growth. You know, staff did a phenomenal job, but the survey and what came back from both the parents and students was really good. So, I know sometimes we hesitate that, you know, we're not here looking just to turn them all into police officers. We want to develop their life skills and open their eyes and have an opportunity to really talk about hard things in a different environment and get to know each other on a personal level. And as you can tell, they're all smiles, right there, they're at the Ventura County Sheriff's Department Academy, and they got to go experience some of that as well. So, moving forward, we're really focused on engagement. It's really important to us, you know, just like everyone else. A lot of those opportunities through the pandemic, really, you know, we lost some of that, and we've lost staffing. So, now we're finding different ways to do this in a different way that we can, with our current staffing level support, and really finding different opportunities. So, the, you know, school district's Family Empowerment Conference, we look forward to, we've talked about being part of, you know, the family nights. We want to, you know, come up with different ways that we can do playground pop-ins and different things where we can, in a different way, be part of the campus environment, you know, versus just being there when it's a child's worst moment or a parent's worst moment, because that makes it much harder to build trust and really know that we are not there to harm anyone. We are there for the reasons of protecting them and building those relationships and that trust early on. We want to continue to collaborate and coordinate with training, you know, we've talked about, and this is even at a bigger county level, about making sure we have shared language for on-campus notifications, so that what the district is putting out in social media and what the police department is putting out is the same, so that there's a unified message, and that it doesn't change when a student or a parent, as the children move from school to school, because we know that happens, but having a more unified message across all the schools and police department staff, as well as district staff, so that we're sharing the same message. And then, we've talked about moving forward, partnering on a bilingual safety video that we would do in conjunction with the school district. So, with that, I think we're going to turn it over to our esteemed colleagues in the school district.
Thank you, chief. Welcome up, Ms. Edison and Mr. Benz.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Again, Kenya Edison, Assistant Superintendent of Student Family and Services. So, I appreciate the opportunity for both the council and the board to come and share some of the work that we're doing throughout the county. The slide that you see up is how we communicate with our community about the work and our focus of our work. Yes, we are a teaching and learning institution, and that is the beacon of light that guides our work, but in this work, we have to commit to, as you heard the superintendent say, the whole child. So, for us, that's the ABCs. You'll hear us talk about academics, arts, and athletics, but the focus of our work, which involves all of our staff, not just teachers, but anyone who is employed by the district, is the work of the next two bullets, which is also the work that we're co-creating with the city, which is about belonging, community, and collaboration. As we work to focus on the whole child, we're moving our entire organization, as you can see in the image that is depicted to the right, right? It's what we do with every child, every chance, every day, every staff member, every department, every skill set, every experience, so that we can ensure that our families and students feel like they belong to Santa Barbara Unified, like this is home for them, and that they can add and contribute to it. So, you'll hear in most of our work, we're really highlighting relationships and how do we co-create the results that families can thrive in. I'm going to use a couple of education jargon, so MTSS is Multi-Tierred System of Support. It is a system framework. It's how do we move our entire organization in alignment focused on the achievement of goals and results for students, families, and staff. Some of the bullets on here are just practices that we use for MTSS. For the purpose of today's meeting, I'm going to focus on two of them. One of them is, we use data to guide our decisions. If we're going to commit resources, commit resources to something, people, time, right, money, we want to make sure that we are monitoring the implementation of it, as well as the outcomes. And we want to make sure both of those things are equally important. The other, which is the reason we're here today, actually, I'm going to highlight two, is identifying mutual interests and identifying and removing barriers. It's not enough for us to talk about the barriers, to label them and highlight them, but how do we work to remove them, either individually in our institution, or how we've chosen to do most of our work in collaboration with community?
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Benz. I'm the Chief Operations Officer, and with this next slide, this is important work that we're going to be doing as we move ahead in this partnership. There's two specific points of data that we really want to lean into. One in particular is the implementation data. So, when we start up, let's say we're starting a program with the city, we want to see like how many teachers, how many folks who are involved with the program, for example, have been trained. So, that's how we're measuring to see if we're implementing the project that we're working on. Then, the second one, which is our student outcome data or staff data, depending on the project, we're seeing the impact on our kids and on our families. So, the, basically, we have implementation outcome data, and then as well as the third one, which is our sustaining practices. So, once we start a project and we continue to move forward and we're finding success, what other ways are we checking to see that it's working the way we want it to work? What other data points do we pull in? Maybe it's also including funding or what have you in terms of as we continue this process? So, data is really guiding our decision around our work.
So, when we talk about youth wellness, what our data tells us is, sometimes we have some really good things already in place, and how do we assess them to scale them up for greater impact? So, we have pockets of excellence already existing around being really intentional about student wellness. As a district, we have coined the approach Integrated Wellness Approach, because we know that it takes every person in a child's life to help them have protective, safe factors and/or developmental assets that are necessary for them to thrive. So, we read these by the outer rings to the inner ring. Sense of belonging and trusted adults are important. We want to make sure every student can identify at least five, right, as we begin this work with fidelity across our system, adults that they can go to. It's more than one, because if that person is out, vacation, ill, we want students also to be able to identify someone else. And sometimes, it's the teacher, and sometimes, it's the campus safety, it might be the office staff, the nutrition staff. So, the work we're doing around belonging and trusted adults is all-staff work. The next is our social-emotional learning, and if you have children or youth in your life, it's what we just did as parents or caretakers or aunts and uncles. We teach self-awareness, we teach self-management, we teach social awareness, responsible decision-making, as well as relationship skills. That's just what we want all kids to be able to do. But what we're doing is making sure we're being intentional in the teaching of those competencies, as well as making sure all adults, when engaging in conversation with students, take it back to that. So, when we say SEL or Social Emotional Learning, that's what we're talking about. It's those five core competencies that every adult can contribute and help develop in students. Mental awareness, all of us need to be aware of what mental, when students or staff are socially-emotionally or mentally dysregulated, so that we can respond appropriately. So, we also are rolling out district-wide, all-staff training. We had a healthy competition in Mental Health Awareness Month last year in May, so that all staff can participate in our module for the learning. It was fun, but this year, we're rolling it out as a Tier One, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, what I mean by Tier One. The last thing where we have very targeted supports to is our mental health supports, right? There's awareness, and then when we identify there's a need, how do we plug students into services? So, as a district, we partner across the community for this, but we've also committed internally to hire staff, particularly at our elementary schools now. We have clinicians, and we also have interns that hopefully will be future workforce for us, that can really support the needs of the student. We use an equity index within our district, which means we identify our students who need the most, based on whether they are foster, homeless, special ed- based on whether they are foster, homeless, special education, low socioeconomic. And the schools with the highest equity index, we want to make sure we target and put supports and services in place there, although all students can access them. So we have integrated within our district the RISE program at the elementary level. We partner with community partners for our secondary space. We also refer out to community partners at the elementary when the need is great, as well as really focusing in on all of our staff having these skills and toolset. We, our board is very generous. We also have a contract with a clinician agency where we provide 12 sessions for families in whichever language is their preference, as well as with helping to find a clinician that meets their back, their family background preference. So we're really working on making sure students are well. When we say well and safe in the district, we're meaning physically, mentally, emotionally, and socially well, which is why we have to partner where those content expertise are not ours. I'll start on campus safety, and then I'll hand it to my colleague. I do want to thank the police department and the sheriff's department also. We worked with our campus safety last week. Their their expertise in the room on safety was very valid. We bring the expertise of adolescent brain development, normal adolescent behaviors, even when they're extreme and unwanted, still normal behaviors in adolescence. And to tie that in and work with partners who definitely plug in like a fit, fit the need of our group that we are working with. So I really want to thank them for their their expertise.
All right. So as you can see with the various work that we do with SBPD, as well as the Park Rangers, as they make sure that our campuses are safe during off-hours. So they're monitoring all of our campuses, whether it's elementary, middle school, or sorry, junior high school and high school. One last thing to be aware of that plays a crucial role is that we also work with the city to to get our crossing guards. That plays an important role as making sure that kids are safe and families are safe as they go to and from our schools. So we have that partnership in place. So, next slide here. So the next part, again, as Dr. Molnato pointed out, we're talking about youth wellness, the second one, the youth engagement. As you know, we have, as it's been mentioned by our colleagues in the city, that we have, we have the, in partnership with the RAP program at our schools, and we have the AOK program at our elementary schools. We actually have, this this past year, we've we've expanded the AOK program to all of the elementary schools. So it's not just within most of the schools, it's in all elementary. The other thing that you know is we're heavily involved with the South Coast Youth Safety Task Force, both the superintendent as well as Superintendent Edison are involved with the task force and the work around that. We, as mentioned, with the Summer Nights partnership, starting the 2122 school year was the first time we actually started to do summer school, or yeah, summer school in our elementary schools. So with that launching, Summer Nights played, or actually, the summer program itself played a particularly important role in terms of engaging students after the after the instructional time during the day. And we did it this summer school as well. Summer Nights, that was a partnership that we did. I know that we did it in Lacumbra last year. As well as, the last thing I think is a, an important issue to bring up is that we've been hearing, we've met, Dr. Molnato and I have met with a partnership, or excuse me, West Side Community Group that has been asking to open up our campuses on the West Side. We've heard that there are not enough green spaces and the park spaces are limited on the West Side. So they came to us to discuss if there's a way that we can open up either Harding and/or Lacumbra space and look at a way to open up that space on the weekends to allow families to come and community members to come in and use that space. So we have been, we initiated a conversation here with with the city and looking at launching a pilot program this year at both campuses to start looking at the process of opening the campuses safely and making sure that they are serving the need of our families and students. One thing to be particularly aware of is that we did look into why our campuses are secured. So, for example, if you take a look at the elementary campuses on the weekends, you'll notice that they are, they are not open to the public, readily open. One of the things that we learned was that when they were open, some of the campuses were opened, and when staff returned on Mondays, they noticed that there were, there were, either there was some damage onto the campus, or there were, they would find things that you would not want our children to be involved with. And so, one of the things that we're excited about doing the pilot partnership is to address two things. One is to make sure that we can open the campuses safely and continue to keep them safely open on the weekend. And at the same time, making sure when Monday comes around, that they're clean and ready for the kids and the staff. So that's what we're looking at with with that program.
And our partnership for after-school and and off-days are important. But what we identify as a school district is that we have a captive audience for 180 days, right? Students are required to be in school. All students between the age of six and 18 are required to be in school for 180 days. So we really reimagine how we allocated resources to give the biggest bang and experience to our students during those 180 days. We partner for 365, but our our charge is to make sure it's a meaningful experience between those 180. So just to highlight some of the things, I talked earlier and I said, our Tier One supports. In education lingo, that just means all students have access to it, right? That means every student has access to what we call our consistent commitments, which are in our Tier One, which is really focusing on mental and emotional wellness. Like, how do we talk about relationships in a way that we all know what our responsibility is in a mutual relationship? Being trauma-informed is really a big one, because we know students are exposed to trauma and adults are too. So how do we identify the manifestation of trauma and behaviors and respond appropriately? Restorative practice is very important, right? How do we ensure that students remain part of the community and get support, as well as have accountability for their actions? How do we do all of that at the same time? You heard us talk about our meaningful family engagement. That's a priority, because we know it's a protective factor that prevents risky behavior. So how do we engage with with our families and provide services and supports and partner with them in ensuring their children, our students, are thriving? That's a priority for us. And then the last, which is the appropriate response to behavior. When I partnered with our colleagues from Santa Barbara PD, we were very clear. Some things are adolescent behaviors and some things are crimes, right? We focus on adolescent behaviors and have a skill set to respond appropriately and partner when it moves beyond our skill set. So it was, that appropriate response is is important, considering child ability, right? Grade level, right? So a lot of things we take into account in education when things happen, not just focusing on the act. So that's important. In the classroom, we are focusing, and our Ed Services Division is really focusing on that community building in there and how instruction is happening, but I want to draw your attention to our Tier Two. Tier Two is where we push into the school and provide small group opportunities for students. On the next slide, I'm going to highlight some of the Santa Barbara City business or agencies that we're partnering with, because we know that there's a gap and a need. We do want to make sure that anyone we partner with also provides meaningful family opportunities. Our Tier Two just means small group. That means some students will receive it, but not all. But they will receive it in addition to Tier One, right? Like, everyone gets that first tier, but some of our students, based on data, will need more. And so that's what the second tier is. That pro-social engagement or the the partnerships that we just highlighted that we have with the city currently, as well as thinking of things that we can move forward with, and then ensuring that we're culturally responsive in all of our community building, because we have a culturally rich community. So ensuring that we're we're being responsive to that. Our few, it just means those are individual services supports, mostly where we partner is on that Tier Two, and we refer out for Tier Three. On this next slide, you'll see some of our partners that we partner across the city with. Some of the things we're doing this year, we're pushing in lunchtime activities for students. So if they have to get home because they have siblings or transportation is an issue, we're providing opportunities during lunch for them to engage in pro-social culturally responsive activities. We're also looking closely at how do we bring on more opportunities for our parents, our families. Every third, first and third Wednesdays, we've coordinated some type of family learning or experience. You heard the conversations about partnering for a family empowerment conference, because our families, again, we have their their children 180 days, but the community has them 365. So for us to highlight the resources across the city is important. This is just a slide just to highlight that partnership, and I'm excited moving forward with that date.
And another thing that came up regarding our library services here in the city and its connection with the school district, they were discussing the OG training. Of course, this is our new OG. So it's our Orton Gillingham trained staff. So what we've actually done is it ties along with what the library was doing. So we are providing training to our our teachers in terms of Orton Gillingham. What is Orton Gillingham curriculum training? It's teaching kids how to use phonemic awareness and phonics, so it's really phonics training. And it ties well, we have a new curriculum that we're we're launching in our elementary schools called Wit and Wisdom, and it's tied into phonemic awareness, phonics, you know, fluency vocabulary, as well as reading comprehension, all these key components that make up how a child learns to read. And so it ties in perfectly to what we we're trying to achieve within our schools, which is making sure that every student receives that opportunity to learn how to decode words and understand words. Another thing to be aware of in particular is that most curriculum that you see in public education, it it works like this. It's like you teach kids how to read, and then they read to learn. So learn to read, read to learn is the phrase. So up to third grade, to the end of third grade, you're teaching them how to read. And then from that point on, you won't see that much curriculum design in terms of how to do decoding and so on. It's the assumption that they know how to read. And as you know, all of our kids come in at various times and various skills. So just to assume that kids know how to read, once they go into fourth grade, is not real. So we need to make sure that we're providing every opportunity and every resource to these kids, whether they're in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade. They're missing parts and pieces of these puzzles to make sure that they can read fluently. That's why the power behind this, the OG training for both our staff as well as the library staff and tying that together is crucial. So just want to make you aware of that. As well as, we know that the superintendent is very passionate about doing a literacy initiative this year and really tying it in closely with the city and using all of our resources to to leverage that part. And then the last one, youth employment. As you would see here, these are the various programs that were tied into to our high school students in terms of their their career track and how to support them with their careers. Couple of things that you won't see on the slide, but we definitely want to make sure that's to your attention, and that would be specifically our PEAK program, as well as our Avid program, as well as the counseling staff. Those, all of those parts are involved in this. Like, for example, this summer, what you would see is, if you would come to the school district, you would see many of our students coming to the district to get their work permits signed. So during the summer, that's a huge opportunity as well. So all of the things that we we heard about, like including with the library about that internship, all of these things are crucial, and we're looking at multiple ways to actually strengthen that and give more opportunities for students in terms of employment development and making sure that they're prepared for the future.
Okay. Thank you for all of our presentations. A few more slides. As you can hear from the staff present, we're all kind of marching to the same drum in our own way, but in ways where we can continue to build from each other's strengths and opportunities. Some of what I will just wrap up with really relate to things that you've already heard in this presentation. And what we've learned as we've worked together more closely as staff is that we're all kind of saying the same thing. So how do we do more work to work together? You know, you, wonderful work that the school district's doing related to youth wellness. You know, some of the things that we recommend that are, and would like to collaborate on are very specific, building on what's happening within the school district, what can happen that the city can participate in as it relates to community sports, as it relates to use of outdoor spaces, as it relates to concepts around Harding and Lacumbra and opportunities there, campus safety and notifications, campus safety plans, things building into that concept of youth wellness and youth engagement, and then also continuing to communicate in more than one language and safety bilingual video. Youth employment collaboration, that's something that I think we can also further expand on and support with school district youth. We have a lot of things that we do just by virtue of providing programs and services and employing youth, whether it's our after-school program, youth apprentices, our Arts Alliance, Summer Camp Junior Counselors, and as you've heard, teen internships, library pages, page apprenticeships, at the same time, building on that high school volunteer opportunity. These are areas where the city can step forward and work in collaboration, further collaboration with the school district. And then in engagement, we've also talked throughout this presentation of all the different things that we do. And just to reiterate, we have youth in high school that are actively engaged in the youth council. We had a two-year pilot of Summer Nights, and we worked very closely with the students from the PEAK program, and it was excellent. That's something that's still a work in progress, but something that we can continue to look at. How do we keep doing this in a way that's collaborative and sustainable for all organizations involved? And then again, as it comes to the library, you know, their role and the importance they place on literacy as a library, as a library department, and clearly a high priority of a school and a school district and what youth leave school knowing. A teen advisory board, getting kids out of the school, out of the school classroom to learn more leadership positions. We can provide that as well. And then the Police Activities League, as you've heard from Chief Gordon, there's more opportunity to really give kids an opportunity to engage in both safety concepts, law enforcement, understand policing, get to know police and how they're a key part of the safety and wonderful aspect of our community. With that, we finished the staff presentation. We realized there's been a lot of information, in some cases, it's been more than once, but hopefully that indicates that we're really trying to work in parallel and work together well.
All right, very good. With that, we're going to come back to the board and council for questions and before we do public comment on the items themselves. So if we have questions, our electronics really aren't set up for this size of a board, so I'm going to ask you to wave your hands. And yes, I see you, Mr. Gutierrez, I see you, Ms. Nettin down there. So we'll begin with that. So questions pertaining to staff presentation, and then we will go to public comment thereafter. Ms. Nettin? Oh, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone for participating and and also doing the work to inform us about all the efforts. And also, thank you for 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 allowing the pilot program to open up those campuses. I'm going to ask for a little bit more. I I want to also include McKinley, because the Lower West Side community also has a hard time having access to open spaces. We have a little pocket city park that's right next to the train tracks and the freeway. But I know McKinley is right there within walking distance for them. So if if that could be considered to be added to the program, I'd really appreciate it. To further ask about the program, it, so I understand the need for To further ask about the program, it, so I understand the need for security in, in, on our campuses because, you know, I went, I went to Harding, La Cumbre, and San Marcos High School. And I remember especially in Harding, when we were going through the DARE program, the officer on their walk to our classroom found and showed us what crack pipes looked like because he, he found it just walking to the classroom on campus. And I also remember kids, one kid got pricked by a needle. And so I know the dangers, right? But I also know the, the benefits of having that open space. And, and being the son of a, of a gardener and a janitor, can you just give me a little more insight? So are you saying that, first of all, let me just compliment, I, I, I was told that the school district pays their janitor $70,000 a year, which I worked as a janitor, and I never even knew that. I never made anything near that, and even as a council member, I don't earn that much. So I was very impressed by that. But what, what is their role exactly? Are, are you saying that in the morning, they don't go through the campus, and after the school ends, they don't go through the campus to clean up? Because if not, then what's the role of the park ranger then?
So I can answer that question in particular, which is that, yes, we have custodial staff that, that stay there after school. They stay there till about 10:30 at the elementary schools to make sure that the campus is safe and clean. In the morning, the, I know our custodial staff will come in at six in the morning, and they start to, they'll walk through the campus, make sure it's secure, and make sure that it's clean. So they'll, they'll do the rounds. And several times, particularly when they come in on Monday, they make sure there are certain places that they check to make sure that it's clean and safe, just with the history of what, what the schools see, you know, the various schools that is. So yes, we have that covered. The, the park rangers, what they do in particular, so when people are off campus after 10:30 at night, they, they still actually, while the custodial staff is there, they will drive by the schools to make sure that they don't see anything that shouldn't be occurring on the campus, campuses, right? As well as over the weekend as well, so, and during the nights.
So then what's the role of the park rangers?
Mayor asks Councilmember Gutierrez, the rangers are just doing premise checks, and they're doing it as part of their regular duties. We're contracted with the school district. So when they're on duty, they pass through either after-school hours or on the weekends and, and on the weekends, basically looking to see if there's anything awry. Is there anyone on campus that shouldn't be on campus? Are there windows open? Is there anything that needs, is of concern? And depending what that is, they take appropriate action. It could be as simple as calling a principal and letting them know that there's windows open in the school and/or if it's something more serious proceeding, whether it has to do with reaching out to law enforcement.
Can I also say too that, that they also will drive by, and I would say, because I work closely with facilities, so what they'll typically see is that they'll see, it could be one of the pipes that are leaking. So they immediately call the head of facilities to go ahead and start addressing that. So that tends to be, I know this past year, that tended to be more of the issues than anything else, some sort of thing that, that was damaged or powers out or what have you. So.
Okay. And so if this is kind of like a practice run, like what are your expectations? Like what are the challenges you're theorizing in running into in, in having the campuses open again?
I think asking in terms of the challenges, I would ask, I would tie it to what are we trying to achieve? So we want to make sure that, one, if we open the campuses, one thing that we know is just by opening a campus doesn't mean that the community will come. So it's going to take a little time for them to know that the campus is open. The second one is that, that's one of the things that we want to work with Parks and Rec, which is actually creating some sort of programs to introduce the campus to be open to the families and the community. The third one is that we would like to make sure that someone is there on the campus just to, if there are any issues or problems, because we also know that people can, they can end up getting hurt. So we want to make sure that we have everything available to them so we can call the proper, whether it's 911 ambulance or whatever maybe, there's that. The last one is that once we close the campus for that evening, we want to make sure that it's clean, the campuses, that it's clean and ready for Monday morning, and that way we're, we're ready to go with our kids.
So how, what recommending, well, how would you want us as a city to help aid that effort?
I would say that it would be, it's important to, to make sure that Parks and Rec feel like they are being backed in this partnership. So that's important that we both come to agreement with our leadership here saying, yes, we would like to do this. That's, that's the first thing. The second one is that I, I think that with our conversations is just monitoring and with the data to determine the need and see if we're going to be able to bring people to the campuses. And again, like I said, it's not going to be like three months, and then people are all of a sudden going to start arriving. It'll take some time to build capacity. But we also want to do this, we don't want to do it with all of the schools because we realize that you want to do this in a way that's pretty much like design thinking model, which is let's do a pilot, let's start figuring out a way, a smart solution to this, right? Because we know there's a need, and we also know the, all the things that we're concerned about. So let's see what we can do, and then the success of that, and then possibly scale it.
Do the, are the park rangers, do they, have they given you an update of the challenges they've faced in patrolling the campuses, something that we should be aware of, that we should anticipate more in the future if, if the program is successful?
Mayor asks Councilmember Gutierrez, they, they keep a log of everything that, that they do. And again, it really has to do with monitoring the condition of the facility. We don't make any decisions about the management of those facilities or how those facilities are used. It's just having an extra set of eyes, just like they do premise checks. We have 60 parks, and so we, we have park rangers that are stretched throughout the community, and so the amount of time they spend is really focused on doing a premise check. And if anything needs to be addressed, making the call so that it gets addressed, but they don't actually do any of that work.
So I remember on the Lower West Side, there used to be a, a type of neighborhood watch called Spark. Is that still active?
Mayor asks Councilmember Gutierrez, I am not familiar with that at all.
All right, I'll double check with that. So when it comes to security, have, have we thought about possibly having surveillance cameras installed at our campuses or parks?
Mayor asks Councilmember Gutierrez, I can speak on behalf of our park system. We have had in the past cameras at Ortega Park, and we have discussed them in certain locations where we have issues that, essentially people breaking the law and significant safety issues. I can't speak on behalf of the school district.
Have, have you all thought about that?
We, we do have security cameras on our campuses. And if we're going to do this process, if we're going to do this partnership, one of the things that we would look into is maybe we might need to add additional cameras, but we do have them on our campuses.
Okay. I know that certain, certain community members like Cox have, have offered services like that, so let me talk to my school board colleagues about how Cox can maybe help out with that. When it comes to the youth job apprentice program, it, so from what I understand, there was talks about scaling that back. Is that true?
Mayor asks Councilmember Gutierrez, that program is entirely funded by the General Fund and Parks and Recreation. So when we have youth apprentices, we pay them a wage, and so we can only hire as many as we have funding for. And yes, like many of our youth programs that were reduced this budget season, that is one that we've looked carefully at and trying to maximize, knowing that our resources are limited.
Okay. Another just general question I have for both the school and the city is when it comes to employee childcare services, do we offer anything to our employees about, to aid them with childcare?
Councilmember Gutierrez, we do not. I would, I would say that during the pandemic, we spent a significant amount of time putting together a temporary program that we thought employees might take advantage of, and it wasn't one that, that got off the ground. People were working from home during the pandemic. We consider anything that happens on a school campus after hours essentially childcare because it enables parents to continue to work and come pick their child up at five or 5:30, whether it's the city's recreation after-school program, whether it's the school district's AOK program, whether it's other programs that are offered on campus. Those function essentially as after-school childcare that helps out families throughout the community.
Does the school district offer childcare to their employees?
I would actually, I would tie into what she was saying, which is, so we don't, we do offer childcare programs because we don't close the schools right at the end of the bell, when the last bell rings, right? We do at the elementary schools in particular receive what they call the ACES grant. So what that grant is designed to do is target our kids who are low income and who need the support. And they're the ones who will receive the after-school program, or they, they stay on campus, they, they're fed, and it goes all the way up to between 5:30 and 6 o'clock at night. And we see many of the kids stay there to that point. So there's that in place. On top of it, we have expanded that program with additional funds that came from the state, which is our, our Extended Learning Opportunity Program funds. And so what we've done is instead of saying, okay, only these groups of kids at these five campuses can do this, we expanded it across. So every school has this after-school program. So, and we continue to work on that and strengthen that for families. We don't check to see if, who employs, you know, the, the families or the adults, right? So we don't know if they're city employees or what have you, but we do focus on the kids and the needs of the family, so.
But, but the employees of the school district, there, there's no, there's no program to help them with their childcare?
So there's, we do offer opportunities for the employees, but the employees do have to, for example, we have like the, the youth center at, at Santa Barbara High School, but they do have to, to pay something to have their kids participating with the program.
Gotcha. Okay. So this is a question for the superintendent. If you had a magic wand, how would you want us to help the school, the school district?
I think it's what we're doing here today. I mean, it's basically about collaborating on data to inform our decision-making, looking at gap areas and seeing where your people, time, resources can help, and the same from us to you back. I'm very proud of what you've heard here today in terms of what we already do, knowing that also things have changed a lot, and we are talking about 21st century families, 21st century learners. It's really important that we don't lose sight that, while you, I don't know if we're the same age you and I, but I remember the DARE program too, and that is not what today's youth need. They're very different, and so I think it's important that we kind of catch up to the times. And as, as much as I also want to look back at what used to be, what needs to happen now, we really need to involve youth and families in our decisions so that we hear directly from them. And one of the things I know we need to do as a district is survey the Harding families and the La Cumbre families as we look at doing this pilot program to make sure that they're on board, because they're youth, you know, attend our schools, and we want to make sure they understand what we're doing, gauge their interests. And I always, you know, I think it's important that we all, we could sit here and think of all these great ideas. We really need to talk to the people that we most impacted, which will be our family, students, and staff. And that includes our custodians that have to clean and our people that work late at night, because they're the ones that are the most impacted. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. And vice versa to our city administrator, how, how can we have the school district help us in your opinion?
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. I would, I would agree with the superintendent. I think that really finding the places to collaborate to make sure that we are best maximizing the resources of each other and that we're not duplicating surfaces, but instead leveraging services and, and therefore being able to expand what we are actually providing.
Okay. And another just point for the city administrator. So I noticed that their, their DEI program, the school district, it was pretty impressive. Do, do we have anything on the city level that's similar to that?
We have a, a program called IDEA that is targeted towards our city staff and, and that is being led by our human resources department and is a, being guided by an interdepartmental team made up of staff from across the organization.
Okay. Maybe if city staff and school district staff can share notes on that issue specifically, I'd really appreciate it. So I know that in the high schools, there's a driving course, because I took it when I was in high school to learn how to drive. Is there anything having to do with, with bicycling? Because right now, a growing issue with us as a city is dealing with the youth on bicycles. So I was just kind of thinking whether or not there's, the school district is doing anything on teaching the youth how to ride responsibly?
I can respond to that. I actually met with a community partner, and forgive me, I may misquote their name, it's either Bike Santa Barbara or Santa Barbara Bikes.
Move, yeah.
Move, thank you. Again, we don't do this work alone in an isolation. They already have work going on, and we talked about how do we scale that up to our school sites. Our elementary schools primarily were the ones asking for support in this area because students are riding e-bikes to school. And so we had a conversation at the end of the year on how do we move forward for this school year? We have not met yet to finalize those plans.
Yeah, if, if you could do us a favor, if possible, and, and send us some kind of newsletter about that, just so that we can share it with our community members, I'd really appreciate that.
And Councilmember Gutierrez, we also have a contract with Santa Barbara Move to provide bicycle training services, and they do focus on training at, at the schools across the region.
Okay. And are you able to give us a little info on how you're dealing with the housing crisis for your employees?
Mr. Gutierrez, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you if I may, because we really need to stay on focus on the agenda items, and we do have a number of people up here that also need an opportunity to ask questions. So if you have a specific question about what we just talked about on the agenda, please state it that.
All right, no, that's fair enough. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll go down to this end of the board. Anybody here have a question for staff as we talked about the agenda itself? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentations and all the information, and thank you for the questions from Councilmember Gutierrez. I only have a few questions. The first question is, when was the last time that the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership met? I believe I'm one of the liaisons, and I haven't to this point served on being a liaison to a meeting.
We actually hosted it last week at the district office. Executive Director John Shetler is one of the co-chairs as of this point, as we're co-leading that effort. So he represents Santa Barbara Unified.
Thank you. And then the next question I have is, do we have data, and this might be from Ms. Zachary, for the programs that you highlighted, the youth-serving programs, do we keep data in terms of demographics, whether it's income level of the families, to identify which youth we're serving, right? Is there a gap in our services, and are we serving the youth that may need it the most?
Great, thank you for that question. So depending on the service that we provide, for example, our Summer Fund program, which we're currently hosting in collaboration with Franklin School Campus, we have, we don't delve into an individual's personal financial background. We have them complete a very simple questionnaire to, just to have a sense of their demographics to, to, to be confident that we really are providing the free program to the people most in need. free program to the people most in need. We also, through our Camp and RAP Scholarship Program, we have families provide us with some amount of information. But again, we rely on people to, to basically demonstrate their own need rather than delve into the details of that. And also through PAL, we fund the Summer Campership Alliance. So when it comes to summer camps, we have a general sense, but we don't have very detailed data because we don't ask for that information. For after-school programs, it's only if parents ask for a scholarship. And again, we serve the youth at four campuses. So that would be from Monroe, Roosevelt, Washington, and Adams. And again, oftentimes, it demonstrates where those kids come from, and parents do have to pay for that program. So their ability to pay factors in as well.
Thank you for that answer. And then for our district staff, similar question about our after-school programming or programming outside of the school hours.
So are we talking about, can you clarify?
Yeah, just, do we keep track of demographics that we're serving in after-school programming? Or when we contract with partners, which of those students?
Yes, we, we do. We, for elementary school, we're tracking it because we're signing up the students. So we track all of that data. And that, that's going to include those students who are involved in the, the programs after school. Same when we, we launched the junior high school pilot program, the STEAM program, we have that data as well, as well as the high school programs that we have throughout the summer. So we're tracking all of the demographics, and so we have that information for you.
Thank you. Two more questions. The next question is regarding the pilot program on the West Side and opening those campuses. What sort of metrics for success are we going to be looking at when we evaluate this program in the future to define what we need to do to make changes? And it's okay if we, we're not there yet, but have you put any thought into what we're looking for?
So I would say that a couple of key indicators would be just how many people are involved. How many people show up to the, to the, our campus to participate or to do whatever it may be? So that would be one. Also, we would like to do, again, like Superintendent Momnato pointed out, is like, we do a survey to see who's interested, as well as doing a survey to see if we're really impacting the families. So do they really like it? So those are two of the key things that we're looking at right now. And I'm sure that we'll, as we work with the city, we'll figure out more indicators.
Thank you. And then last question, I believe is for Ms. Zachary. I'm missing it now. It was about the facility rates and making sure that there's equity amongst the, both the district and the city. Currently, are there big discrepancies? I'm not sure when we were looking at the solutions, why that one was on there.
Mayor and council and board members, there are some discrepancies. Rather than go through the list, like, you know, we have differences in terms of the actual per-hour field rate. And for whatever reasons, we haven't had an in-depth discussion with school board, the school district regarding that. But yes, it could be as much as a difference of 40 to 50% depending on the rate.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snedger, or Ms. Alvarez? Okay, Ms. Snedger, please.
Thank you. Just for full disclosure, I do currently have a Santa Barbara Unified School District high schooler, the last of three. So all three of my children have been entrusted to the Unified School District, and we've been quite happy with that. I just want to lead with that. And that I also teach at City College and teach a lot of dual enrollment students, so also serving Santa Barbara Unified School District students. And I volunteered for years with the Avid program, and I can say firsthand how incredible that program is. So that's just, just for disclosure, some background. So a question here, could we partner with, say, the art programs or academies and, you know, art, robotics, film, in activating or in showcasing maybe in our vacant storefronts, or having ways to maybe showcase some of what, there's so many exciting things happening in these programs, you know, poetry, art, film, that, that maybe there's some way to partner together to showcase some of that? Is that something we could consider?
I'll take it on. So we are working on a strategic arts plan as a school district. We did put a little pause on it because it got towards the end of the school year, and we couldn't quite get to it. But one of the things that we're doing is calling in all the arts nonprofits to help us with that strategic arts plan and ensure, again, that there's a collaboration of resources. I love your idea of definitely using the storefronts, and I just want to make a pitch that that, in addition to the arts, robotics, film, including the poetry, the best way to get kids excited about reading and literacy is to have them write stories and then have the high school students turn them into films that can then be featured into a week-long event of poetry, film, and such. So that's something we're very interested in. As far as robotics, as you know, I know that we're in the city of Santa Barbara now, but for the city of Goleta, where Dos Pueblos High School, engineering high schools at, there is a lot of work that they do in robotics, where they go out to competitions. And I am sure that if we had some platform for us to feature some of the work that students are doing, we can definitely take that on as well and bring some of that learning here.
I think that would be fantastic. I'm thinking also of the leadership academies, and I think highlighting that for our youth is for the whole community. I don't think it crosses jurisdiction lines of that's in Goleta. I mean, we have a lot of families who interweave throughout, and I think that would be really, I'd like to support that. And then how are staffing issues impacting the ability to actually deliver all these services? I mean, it's a lot through the library, through parks, through the school district. Are staffing issues a concern?
We're going to, Councilmember Snedger, I think we're going to take turns on this. Short answer is absolutely. It's very, very difficult to find staff, and that's partly why our programs have shrunk. You know, the advantage of, of having the programs that we have at after-school and summer is that's when we do youth programs. Or we have programs that are in our actual facilities, but there's actually, you know, actually not a ton that happens on the weekend unless it's self-directed or done by contractors. A lot of what we provide in the community, the different youth programs, and we've had many, are actually implemented by contractors. So yes, staffing is a huge, huge challenge. That's where in some cases, collaboration could really benefit us because we probably compete for staff.
And for us as a school district, our staffing, similarly in those classified jobs that are mostly the summer and after-school, in the teaching spaces, we've always had mathematics that is an area of need, special education is a big area of need. Most recently, we're starting to see some more language teachers. And I know that we're speaking about other areas, but the, the high cost of living is a big impact to our ability to keep and retain and retract staff.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, for the wellness, we're really being focused on ensuring that we identify ways all staff can contribute so that it is sustainable beyond a position. So for the wellness part of it, most of the things I talked about includes all staff.
Thank you. But there's also a position for that as well?
No, those, that's all staff.
Okay. Thank you. And then what is the interface between, say, the school district and the youth council? Is, is there ever an opportunity for the Santa Barbara City Youth Council to be communicating with the school board, or how does that work?
We have a youth board member, and the superintendent has a youth advisory council. I am not aware of any connection between that body and the body that the city offers, but we can talk about how we can engage.
We have not yet had an opportunity to, I think, bring those two together. We have a superintendent advisories council that we could probably bring together to the youth council. It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, have a summit like, like we are a little bit, like a little workshop about, really from their perspectives about what could work. And then I really want to thank you for the great future collaboration ideas. One question I have is about volunteer hours. And I know, this is sort of a personal observation of mine, that it's easier for students of privilege to accomplish those volunteer hours. It's often heavily subsidized by, by parents shuttling students around and, you know, various other types of support. And some students really need to work to be earning extra money and don't really have the luxury of volunteer time. So I'm wondering if there could be something, maybe using the Equity Index or something else, I won't, I won't pretend to know how, that where we could partner so that some of these employment with the city or other nonprofits, or a lot of these programs that were listed under the college and career participation with PAL or library programs, if those could count so that maybe a student could be both earning an income that they need to help and also earning those volunteer hours?
I'm going to ask Dr. Sheffield, are you able to speak a little bit to the requirements for the volunteer hours and the different opportunities? You're bringing up an interesting point, or a challenge we often face, which is the requirement to, to high school graduation, which is a minimum number of service hours. I do know that there is an issue about receiving payments, so I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent Secondary to come and help shed some light on that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Lynn Sheffield, Assistant Superintendent of Education Services. There is a requirement for 60 hours, and it has been something of conversation for our staff, for our students, for just the reason you mentioned. Right now, I'm in conversation with my college and career coordinator, as well as working with my staff and principals to look at ways, just as you had mentioned, to really bend a little bit and look at ways that we can make sure our students meet that requirement. It's still important. And it's important for our students to be able to see how to help others and do other things. But it's important for us to really keep in mind where our students come from and what they bring to the table. So we were, are working on different ways in which they can fulfill that requirement. And it doesn't always have to be as black and white as going out to a shelter or something like that, but looking at different ways to fulfill the 60 hours.
I appreciate that. And if there's collaboration through the many programs, maybe that's something that could work too. Thank you so much.
That would be great. Thank you.
And then how, how many students are served? And what, what is the demographic? Is it shifting over time? Are we seeing gentrification? Are we seeing fewer numbers? Are people fleeing the city, or are they moving to the city in droves, or something in between?
Like, like across the str, the state.
Across the district, our school district.
Well, we are similar to the state in terms of the drop in enrollment, which is something between 3% and 4%. So we're no different than the state. We might be slightly above it, but not too much. Our district enrollment is about 60% Latino Hispanic students, 36% white. The rest are under 5%, sometimes a little less than 1%, which is Asian, Black, African-American, Filipino, Native American students. I hope I'm not forgetting the group. Demographics-wise, what we have seen is an increase in students that are under the poverty level. That has increased significantly after the pandemic. And our schools used to only have some that received Title I federal funding due to poverty. Now all of our schools receive Title I federal funding. So all our schools have seen an increase in that demographic of socio-economically disadvantaged families. I believe that for us, that's the biggest concern in Santa Barbara Unified is the, the myth that we might be serving a very, you know, we do serve some students from more affluent areas in some schools, but we overwhelmingly have a greater need than I think most people realize when it comes to the fiscal health of families.
Thank you for highlighting that. That's, I think, actually really significant and, and who, who we all serve in the community. I really appreciate the unified language that you were talking about. I have had the experience before of there being a lockdown on campus, and I'm hearing about it from somewhere else, and then it's not, I don't know what to do, or who I'm supposed to contact. So I'm really appreciating that. And I'm, I'm just going to trust that that's going to work itself out. But in the event of a disaster, where do people go? I, I know I talk a lot about resilience hubs and different things, and then people are, oh, no, you're supposed to go to Santa Barbara High, or oh, no, you're supposed to go to, I don't, the library. Or where earthquake happens right now, where do people in the community gather for information? Are we coordinated on that? Or could we be?
So I will say that during the pandemic, and we've had, had some practice with the reins already with emergency operations, and as Chief Gordon has highlighted, we worked through the county emergency services. So we all gather with the county's direction on most of these issues that have happened since I have arrived. We also have with the common language now, not just for Santa Barbara Unified, we get students from five additional school districts, as you know, Cold Springs, Goleta, Hope, Mahonecito. And so all the school districts in Santa Barbara County are using the same language when it comes to emergencies. And I would say that, to your question, it depends on where the emergency happens, to be able to answer where people are directed to. I do know that our high schools are often used for emergency, you know, we get calls from the Red Cross to use the Dos Pueblos gym, for example, if there's an emergency in that area. I hesitate to say this is the only place you go to, but I will say that where we are very challenged as a community, in my opinion, since I've arrived here, is in the information control. And that is because there are so many social media networks that our youth use that maybe some of us don't even know about. We had an instance where we had a false active shooter message that went out at San Marcos High School, and parents were getting messages from their students because somebody across the street was live streaming that they saw the active shooter running, which was not true. And so we had, we happened to be at the same meeting with the city, Santa Barbara Police Department. We were able to quickly gather in the reception area and, and send out communication as quickly as possible. We happened to be in the same room. But I think the greatest challenge we face as a community, that's either the school district or any city municipality, is that social media and the way students and our youth use channels to communicate, we really need to be on top of and understand. And that's, that's even why it's more important for us to have positive working relationships and collaboration no matter what. And that's why I really appreciate the, the chief's comments earlier, and I echo back, that that is the place of mutual interest that I think would benefit us all, in addition to cybersecurity issues that we know we can all face at any moment's notice. I think just being aware of AI and its impact, social media, information that gets sent out, and misinformation that we probably have to combat the most. So I know that was not part of our meeting, but in addition to that, I just want to make sure that we understand that is what's going to really be difficult for us if we don't address it together.
And I do appreciate you pointing that out, Superintendent Momnato, because we do, we, we won't, don't want to get into full district policy things and specific things in the school. I'd like to, if you can say to our youth programming and our cooperative relationship there, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Well, I figured that affected our youth, and it is cooperation. And I want to support the pre-collaboration on disaster preparedness, and so that everybody knows ahead of time, at least in, you know, who to contact, or, or a few couple points of contact where. And then just last question, I, I was really appreciative of you mentioning trauma-informed practices. I know in the education world, that's at the forefront of everything. And just, I just need to ask the question, it's my last question, but what, what are we doing specifically for our transgendered youth? Just the highest rate of suicide, self-harm, mental health issues, just, and that, that's for all of us. What, what are we doing specifically for transgendered youth?
In the platform that we're using to really highlight the emotional wellness, trauma-informed practices, and how to identify students that are in emotional and mental distress, there's other modules on there. It's about 12 of them, and one of them is supporting our LGBTQ plus community. So in addition to partnering with community partners, it's just making sure that we all understand what support looks like, and ensuring that we have an equitable environment that supports all of our students' needs. And particularly if a student has a need because they're dealing with gender identity or otherwise, that we're responsive and can connect them to long-term services and supports. So our preparing all staff is to identify, so that they can identify students who are in distress, approach them not to trigger them further, and then get them in distress, approach them not to trigger them further, and then get them to the appropriate resource. So that is, that's for all students.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. Vice President Alvarez.
Thank you. My deepest appreciation for the preparation for your presentations, very informative. And I've learned quite a lot, even though I listen to our district staff frequently. And also, a big thank you to Ms. Zachary, Ms. Cadiante, Ms. Gordon, Chief Gordon. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. And I do have a few clarifying questions. Mr. Vence, in the youth wellness portion, I did not hear you mention anything about our student meals and the access to meals. Would you tell us a little bit about that and then I'll ask my question?
Of course. So the governor passed, well, actually instituted meals for everyone. So in the past, what we would do is typically provide meals for free if students belonged to, what would they call it, the National Meal Program. So that's if the students are from a low income. So it's the Free and Reduced Meal Program. What we realize is that just because a student doesn't qualify or they don't identify, doesn't mean that they show up to school non-hungry. So what the state has done is instituted a program where we no longer are asking for students to identify that for that free and reduced meal or pay for it. Instead, all of our students receive a free, healthy meal from us. So that's the program that we have now. Thank you.
Also, what about in the summer when there's no school? Can you quickly say that?
Well, we do provide meals for the students at that time as well. So it's similar with the students participating with the summer programs. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. I'll also add that the library partners with the food bank to offer free lunches for all children under the age of 18 all summer long, in addition to other healthy food programs. In conjunction with that, it's funded by the California State Library.
Great. Thank you. I know there's a lot of food insecurity in our town. It may be difficult to comprehend, to believe, but it's really, it really happens. So I wanted you to highlight those programs, so thank you for doing that. And also, you spoke briefly about the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, the ELOP. Is that also in the summer?
Yes, we used specifically that funding source to help support the summer programs that we implemented this summer as well as last summer. So the answer to your question is yes.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to make sure that we understood that 100%. Then I do have a couple of questions and then some comments. I've been to the presentation of the library services at one of the elementary schools, and I was extremely, extremely pleased and honestly impressed of the services that you offer, in addition not only to books and literacy, other literacy supports, but I was impressed that you serve also say, well, recreation activities, camping supplies, and I had no idea that was available to the community. So thank you, thank you for that service that you offer. And then as I'm listening to all this, I'm trying to connect the pieces. And I'm thinking, okay, we have an interest on literacy, right? The library and of course, as a school district, that's one of our missions. The other one is we talk about a paid teen internship program. The other part, we talk about our budget concerns. The other part, we talk about staffing. Could we bring those together? Could we do the summer literacy program where we hire some of our teens and maybe some of them, we train them to be volunteers so that it's a bigger, a bigger collaboration?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And I will say that is exactly what we've been doing with this grant-funded program. So it runs through March of 2024, our funding. We had $100,000 to pay teen interns, and that's exactly what the teen interns did. So our, you know, more senior library staff, more experienced staff would take these teen interns and they would go to the meal sites, not only at the library, but all throughout the community, promote summer reading. They would provide recreational activities over lunch or learning opportunities over lunch. And then they also did that inside the library as well. So it was both at going to the parks where we do program with the library on the GoVan and supporting that. In addition, most of them do have an interest in that type of activity. Some of them learned how to update the 3D printer and run all of the prints for that. Some of them worked with our marketing to generate social media content promoting summer readings. So specialized interests based on that. And it was a huge beneficial service for the library to be able to have such robust engagement and to be able to bring more activities out to the community during the summer, just to have that extra support, those extra hands. And they run Library Lab on every Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00 instead of just from 2:00, you know, to 3:00. And so that anytime it's beneficial for a family, they can come in. And there's one library, more senior staff members supporting the program, but they train the teen interns to run one particular station. I mean, we had 350 people come to like Pokemon Day at the library, and we wouldn't have been able to support that many people if we hadn't have had those additional funds. So as I mentioned, that grant funding is running out, but we want to save, because this program has been so successful, a portion of our regular hourly budget for this additional support and training for summer interns, because it has been so beneficial. So we'd welcome any ideas on further collaboration or expansion of that program.
In my perfect world, I was thinking of expanding this program. And of course, we hired a community development liaison who's right here. So it would be great if the two of you could talk about grants, about pursuing grants and expanding this program, so that we engage more youth, that we have more volunteers, and we come together even more. So I would like, I personally would like to see a lot more of that. Thank you. And then I do have a question for Chief Gordon. I like everything you said about having common language for emergencies and of course for disasters and so forth. I know that the Santa Barbara County Education Office, and perhaps you've been part of these discussions, they've been working with Sheriff Brown, and to have a liaison, a dedicated liaison for the schools for safety. And I don't know, forgive me if you've been part of those discussions as well. And I'm interested in seeing how we can all work together, not only in Santa Barbara Unified Schools, but all the schools in our city where we speak that common language.
So I've actually been part of, along with Under Sheriff Bonner.
Bonner.
All the conversations regarding this and the new position that's being funded through the county for that school, safety liaison, and all of the discussions regarding the common language. So yes, we've been participating, and I've actually been a part of all those meetings. We just introduced it to all of the chiefs within the county at a meeting a couple weeks ago. So we're talking amongst all the chiefs as well and how we all integrate that into our language. So it's an ongoing conversation. It's something that is different. And so we're all joining the conversations and making sure we get to the right point. I've been part of the conversations with all of the different districts that the county brought in as part of a smaller coalition kind of group to work through the details before it went to all the superintendents. So yes, we've been part of all those discussions and are extremely supportive of all that. And like I said, it was presented to all of the police chiefs in the county outside of ourselves and the sheriff's department a couple weeks ago at a county-wide meeting.
Great. I'm happy to hear that. And will that be integrated in the shared language on all of our campuses?
Yes, and that is, yes, and that is the goal of the shared language. You know, because there's not just a shared language, there's a shared color coding and other things, because you can't just think in terms of active shooter. There are so many other incidents that occur. It could be that we have an incident that occurs off-campus, so we're just asking you to shelter in place, so that we're using all the right language. You know, we quickly learn when something happens at one school that suddenly it gets out and everyone assumes that it's at all the schools. And so not only do I communicate with the superintendent, we actually communicate with Susan Salsito directly. And so we've tried to create different ways so that we're not just getting the information to our superintendent, we're getting the information to all the different schools. So we are certainly working on communication. You know, the floods was a great example of all of us being in the same room and trying to make sure where, we're trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone at a county level. And, you know, we made a decision, we put it out, and five minutes later, we had a different level of flooding and we had already said, release the kids, and that created a problem. So I think we just learned from all those things and we still have to be flexible and adaptable through all of it, because there's just not one set. So the more we can use the shared language, the more we do shared training together and talk about those things and have open conversations, the better we get and the more prepared we are.
Great, thank you. I'm happy to hear that this is moving along and of course, that you're part of it. So thank you. Appreciate it. And this is more for our staff. In regards to the pilot program at Harding and La Cumbre and perhaps McKinley, I would like to see your plan. I would like to see the business plan where we incorporate what we need, the staffing we need, because we will need staff, to make sure, are the bathrooms open? Are the bathrooms clean? And we may not be able to get that staff. It's beyond their regular work hours. What safety concerns do you have? And what are your ideas to mitigate those safety concerns? One of my concerns is, I used to work at a high school and at a junior high, and in the mornings, early in the mornings, our facility staff members who are already spread very thin, or sometimes they're not there for whatever reason. And it was very difficult to open the campus on a timely manner because there was a lot of cleanup that needed to be done, where it, sometimes it included, you know, unsafe objects, as we already mentioned. So I would like to see, from your point of view, Mr. Vence, Ms. Edison, that plan, that business plan. I think we agree that it would be a benefit to our community, and I would want to make sure that we left no stone unturned. And also, how are the principals part of this discussion? Because they know their schools, they know something that we don't. So I want to make sure that we're not interfering with their weekend events or what have you. So I would, I'm very much interested in seeing that plan. Perhaps you can bring that to us, I don't know, between you and Dr. Maldonado at a future meeting, so that we have the opportunity to ask questions as well.
Yes, and we'll be working on that plan with the city as well. So it was important to have this particular meeting as we're moving forward.
Great, thank you. I will keep my questions for another day. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And I will actually ask my colleagues who still have questions to be mindful, we do have a lot of public speakers as well, they're going to be speaking after this. So are there questions, are there questions? Mr. Friedman. And once again, we do have a whole stack, so.
Just for timekeeping, I'm somewhere in between Councilmember Gutierrez and, what member, Escobedo. In between the two. I just have four questions. So first, thank you, everybody, for the presentations. It's great to have this again. We haven't had it since 2019. And when we talk about the benefits, one of the benefits was of these is the Family Summer Nights program came out of a discussion out of it. And before we knew it, myself and Councilmember Gutierrez and our city staff were working on the program, almost had it prior to COVID, but not, and it came back. And we ended up working with both East Side and West Side community, and Mayor Potem Gutierrez came in. So just out of these conversations, we had a lot of high-level administrative staff, school board members, and council that were championing the program. So that's the value of these, and it just came out of just casual conversations. So the first question is, what is the status of that program? Ms. Zachary?
Councilmember Friedman, as you know from our budget deliberations, we did not include funding for it for fiscal year '24 and '25, since we had to make fairly significant budget reductions. But we did, working very closely with the Boys and Girls Club and I think Peak Staff as well, host six nights this summer. Our intent is to review the success of this summer, which was quite successful. We had six nights and about 600 kids participate. Those are some duplicates, so some kids came every night. So we had three on the West Side and three on the East Side. But we need to go back and look at what it costs to pull that together, what the, you know, outcomes where it was quite successful, and if it was to move forward in the future, how best to implement that. One of our approaches and considerations is that a third party can potentially do it very well with some support, rather than being the lead on it, for example.
Thank you. So if we want to continue it, we need, you're gathering more data. I would just ask that as you update the council, if you could update the school board as well, because this is a joint partnership. How are you communicate that to them? But I think they'd be very interested as well, since they are, we're in this together with them, so just making sure they're up to date on it. Next question is also one that came up, has to do with Monroe, the after-school program. And there was the two programs that were being offered, one by the school district, one by the city. Can you just update us on where we are with those and if there's, if we're looking at potentially combining resources to make it more efficient, so we can serve just as many students rather than running two separate programs? Or are we going to continue with two separate programs?
Councilmember Friedman, members of the City Council and members of the Board of Education, that's a discussion we still need to have, because there's, the offerings for after-school program clearly have evolved with the funding for ELOP, the fact that we've provided recreation after-school for so many years. We haven't engaged in that conversation yet, but I think from our standpoint, it does make sense to provide the most efficient service to as many kids as possible. And whether that's one program or it continues to be two programs will really depend on looking at the options and opportunities that we do have.
I think I'll be looking forward to having more information on that as well, coming back to council at the appropriate time. Two more questions, Mr. Mayor. Third one, it has to do with mentorship programs. In the elementary school, I noticed that on one of the slides here, that it was the Council on Alcoholics and Drug Abuse, the Fighting Back Youth Mentor Program, and I've been participating in that going back to, I think, the 2005 fiscal year throughout the years. And it's great in the elementary, but is there any discussions about when they get into high school, either continuing with their, finding extra support for the mentors that have those established relationships, or finding a way to expand to professionals and other adults in the community to mentor on a one-on-one basis with the high school students? Because what happens a lot of time in the current mentor program is you start in elementary school, you may make it through junior high, but when they get to the high school level, that's where a lot of the relationships that break apart. And then I found that they start up again when they're getting their early twenties. But during that time, when that mentor builds that trust, and you mentioned that in one of the slides too, is to have more than one individual who the student trusts, and that mentor is one of those people. So is there any discussion with CADA about possibly enhancing the high school aspect of that program?
We met with all of our community partners about opportunities for reimagining their services and supports. CADA was one of the agencies we met with. We don't have that finalized yet.
Okay, I would just be interested in just learning more about that program due to previous involvement mentoring. I think it's very valuable. And again, it does build that one-on-one trust that was mentioned in the presentation today. And so my last question is, we talked about in the presentation that the Joint Use Agreement expired in 2019. And what is the status of updating the Joint Use Agreement?
Councilmember Friedman, members of the Board of Education and also council, this is part of kind of our initial attempt of looking at where, where are we collaborating? Where can we collaborate? I think we clearly know that what was the Joint Use Agreement is going to be different moving forward. And is it a Joint Use Agreement? Is it an MOU? It needs to touch not just recreation and education and use of school facilities and city facilities, its safety, its wellness, its library. And so I think what we would be proposing is coming forward with a way of working together in some sort of formal agreement and bringing it back to both boards for consideration that's more comprehensive than what we've had in the past.
I'm pleased to hear that you're considering expanding it beyond just uses of facilities and services staffing, but to the safety, wellness, and libraries, you put it. Because the Joint Use Agreement, or whatever it becomes, would be the key in identifying how we can formalize and codify and set expectations for the roles that each of us have in these. And kind of without it, we might think one of us is doing it or the other, or we might have duplication of services. So I think that, when we talk about the whole discussion today, that might be, to me, the most important part of getting it done, because it sets the framework for us to be able to implement all these ideas. the framework for us to be able to implement all these ideas. And in terms of a timeframe, I'll put it out there, I don't know if it's achievable, but spring of next year, and the reasoning is that if we have that in place, when the school board and the council starts getting into their budgets and looking at it the next year, we'll have a better understanding of what the costs are going to be to do some of these programs. We can get that now, but it would be much more succinct, and it would give us more data information on what we're going to be funding, what programs and services, and we can incorporate that into our budgets next year. And if it doesn't happen, we can do it the year after, but if we could make that happen, I think it would help us. Then the sooner we get that done, the sooner we'll be able to get into the classrooms and helping the students. And then the last comment I just have is I'm supportive, and I want to thank my colleague.
Eric, we're going to do comments afterward.
This way I don't have to do it later. I just want to say I'm supportive of Mr. Gutierrez, Councilmember Gutierrez's initiative. I want to thank you for bringing it forward to try to get the schools in. I saved you time later. Thank you.
All right, very good. Questions, other questions for staff from the board? President Moten Sims.
Sims Moten.
Sims Moten.
Sims Moten, get it right, Randy. I know, right. Thank you all. Thank you for those wonderful and very detailed and informative presentations. I just have just a couple of questions, actually just to extend on Councilman Friedman with regards to bringing back a report that talks about the budgets, that's tied to our annual operating agreements, also tied to our joint agreement background. So in that telling us where we are jointly funded, and where it's vulnerable, and where we can then, because we have a very generous community. So we might can do that, if, you know, if we can do it early enough, we can ask the community to help that, so that we don't have the disruption of services, you know, for our youth, and going back and forth, or having the emotional tie to that. And then one question with regards to the pilot program. Is there a difference between opening it as a pilot program for families just to come on during the weekend versus an event that happens? Do we have that distinction as we start to go forward?
That's a great question. So just to bring a little clarity to that, so at our high schools, if you go to the high schools on the weekend, you'll see specific events, because we have outside organizations, they go through Facilitron, rent a space, and they use it, as well as we have athletics occurring. What we see here with our elementary and junior high school space, what we're talking about is that we don't see that happening. So if we open the campus, then with the help of Parks and Rec figuring out those events, so it would be tied in. So it's a combination of both.
Okay. So I think that's really important, that we communicate that out, so it's not misunderstood from the public's perspective. And I think all the things that we're doing here is important too, in communicating clearly and understanding. And are we, through the actions that we're taking, meeting the expectations? Because it's one thing to ask for something, but are we meeting that expectation, what you thought it was going to do? One other question is, I think this is for Chief Gordon, finally get to meet you, is how do other kids get involved with PAL? Is there applications, or how do they do that?
It's easy. Just come to the center.
Just come to the center.
Yes. They have drop-in hours. If you have children that are interested in becoming part of PAL, you can put them in contact with us, and we can link them as well.
So how do you outreach to students who may not, who may have a different experience with police? How do you outreach to those to get them involved?
That is something that we definitely need to work on and do better. You know, in the past, we've had Explorer programs, this Discover Recruit, you know, it's working with the staff at PAL to try to actually do a better job with that, and making sure we're working within, you know, everyone's staffing and abilities. So I think there is more opportunity for us to expand that, for sure, and to be out there more available. But with that, I think, when we talk about the different drop-ins and different opportunities for engagement, those are just as important, because if you just put in the word "police" and the Police Activities League, some steer very clear of that. Let's just be honest about it, which is unfortunate. But I think the more that we are, which we are trying to do, you know, we're doing, you know, whether it's coffee with a cup, or whether it's ice cream, and different events, and trying to be more in the public, to engage in those conversations, you know, so that we can do more of those things. So the conversations that we have had, and what are those opportunities, you know, and we're trying to become more involved, even with the Boys and Girls Club. I've toured both facilities, and we're trying to find different opportunities, so it's not just through PAL.
Right.
And being involved in more of the community organizations, and having more of those conversations, and being more present, you know. And we've been, you know, the district has invited us to different things, so that we can actually partner more often and better with different things too. So whether it's PAL or different things, being more out there and being more present and more visible, so that we can overcome some of those pieces of it, that are just factual.
They are factual. So I really appreciate that, and that's not easy work to do. And so I would continue to say, we just need, keep working toward that. Even in sometimes when we're sending out the pamphlets, if it doesn't reflect,
Yes.
even though you have the best adventures saying that's what we want to do. But I think as a whole, in terms of the pamphlets and communication that we're sending out, needs to reflect,
Yes.
so that people feel like they can be a part of it, even if they're a little suspicious of it.
Yes. And that is part of even, whether it's our recruitment or our hiring strategy, you know, we have to learn a different way to communicate, which we are doing.
Yep.
It's just a process. And we're getting better at it. Sometimes we make missteps, but we are certainly making all the efforts to do all of that, and be reflective of our community, be reflective of all those efforts in that way, so that we are part of our community and not separate from our community.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for that, that report. And I just have one question for literacy. Tell me your name again.
Molly Wetta.
Molly Wetta. So thank you. So I'm from First Five, True Heart and Two. I'm always talking about my littles, right? So how can we, again, how is the library working with the early care and education?
Yeah, I didn't emphasize that in this presentation, but we have a very successful, like, very innovative program called Stay and Play, that we offer every Tuesday at the East Side Library, and then at community parks throughout the week. So that is not only early literacy instruction with like a storytime, and singing, and songs, and reading books, but it's also community and parent support, or caregiver support, targeting not only parents, but friends, family, and neighbor caregivers. So it's a two-hour program, not just a 20-minute storytime. And so that's one of the ways we do that. We invite community organizations, whether that's write care, doing speech and hearing assessments, so that people can learn about that, or whether that's Unity Shop, coming in and letting them know that there are resources available to supplement what they may not have at home, or the resources to provide. We also have our community support specialist from Family Service Agency, same similar position as in many of the school districts. And we've seen, especially at the East Side Library, that is instrumental in not only reaching, you know, people who are unhoused that visit the library, which was one of the intentions of it, but supporting especially Spanish-speaking families. And that a lot of them, until they're connected to the school district, till their kids are going into kindergarten, they're not aware of all of the social services. They don't know that they can get, you know, free services in so many areas. And so having all of those community connections, the organizations come into the library for a five to 10-minute presentation about their services, and then just spend some time, so they can talk one-on-one, has really been instrumental. And we'll be bringing back a presentation in early October to City Council on that, that will go in more in-depth. But we also offer a series of webinars called Raising a Reader, where our children's librarians start with babies and go all the way up through junior high age of how to get your kids engaged in books that are age-appropriate, that meet their developmental needs, that target their interest, so that they can better support that, in addition to like the one-on-one services that we offer if you visit the library. And then we have other early literacy classes throughout the week that are a more traditional model from Stay and Play. So that's just kind of a brief overview of those services.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I also extend the offer, please let's reach out and communicate with First Five. That is, literacy is our number one thing for school readiness. So I appreciate that, and look forward to that partnership there. So that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sims Moten. It's Gutierrez.
I have a question for school district, for facilities. There has been assumptions in the community that in order to rent a field, a soccer field, from the school district, it's a lot more expensive than renting it out through Parks and Rec. So if you can explain to the public, how much the school district charges to rent out a soccer field? And it might vary from a field at the elementary level to the high school level, and why, what is included in those fields? And Ms. Zachary, after the school district explains their fee process and how to apply, if you can explain also the fees for our soccer fields for parks.
So regarding the rental of the fields, the various fields, I cannot give you that specific information. I will have to go back to facilities to make sure I get the proper information regarding that. So to get all the parameters within Facilitron, that process, so.
All right, very good.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. I'm actually looking through my notes, and I'm missing them completely, but I did have that information for you. If you could just give me one minute, I will look it up. But we do have field rates that vary based on whether it's youth or adult, and then the location of that field, and what it's also used for. So very specifically, when it's a turf field for baseball or soccer for youth, it's $25 an hour. And for tennis, a court is $20 an hour. And then for a baseball soccer field, for adults, it's $52 an hour. And for tennis courts, it's $27 an hour. So slightly higher, obviously, for an adult use. It's our intent that we have, you know, not just youth, but also adults out playing sports. And then we also have a number of locations throughout our city that have turned into drop-in field use, because we suffer from a lack of field space throughout the city, which again, requires more turf maintenance and different steps that we have to take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no further questions on the panel, I will go to public comment. We have a number here. It's going to be three minutes at the dais. I'm going to ask people once again to respect the fact we're trying to stay to an agenda, and if we could speak only to those items we've talked about today, which are primarily about youth and youth activities. And at this point in time also, I'm going to ask those online to raise their hands if they want to be included in speech. First speaker will be Denise Spangler-Adams.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, because I could never sit that long. So I appreciate all of you. I came today, it's the same exact hearing that I've heard every year for 43 years. I could replace Mayor Rouse with Hal Conklin, Harriet Miller, Sheila Lodge. It's the same old, same old, yadda, 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 yadda. Pat yourself on the back. My concern is the East Side and the West Side. It's not fair in this town. My son participated in PAL. He was one of the original members. We participated probably in everything from soccer to band to you name it. And there's lots of opportunities here. I can assure Representative Gutierrez-Oscar, that on the West Side, we have plenty of money. You can open up all your schools, your playgrounds, your libraries. We will find the money, and you open it, because your kids deserve better. And the same on the East Side. Our community has lots of money. We can do lots of programs. But the problem, from my perspective and what I heard again today, the comfort zone of our school board is the social, emotional well-being of the kids. The important part for all of you is to instruct the kids academically. They will have confidence if they can access participation. The East Side and the West Side kids come out of Santa Barbara Unified at $35,000 to $45,000 a year. Mayor Rouse's son, my son, all the other kids up here, we come out at $200,000 to $400,000 a year. What is wrong? It's because we say, let them play, let them babysit, stay after school and play. I was a playground director for Los Angeles City Schools from the time I was 14 to the time I was 20. I was paid $5.50 an hour. That would be equivalent today of $46 an hour. To answer your question, Representative Stedden, I was poor. So the school selected the poor kids and gave us a chance. We got paid. We didn't do any of the silly 60-hour volunteer stuff. When we needed to earn money, we got paid. That's how I got to go to college. That's how I got to go to graduate school. And all this social-emotional stuff, my complaint as a feminist, you have feminized everything in our school district. Let's get back to the core, the academics. Give the kids a chance. And the East Side and the West Side kids are my family, if you will, because of the Boys Club, and both Oscar and Alejandro know that. The police program, Adrian Gutierrez and all of them, they do wonderful things, but we have to restructure systematically how it works. And then you won't have to cut programs because of the city budget, because our kids will be able to stay here, and they'll contribute as taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Alice Post is the next speaker, followed by Kira Push.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Maldonado, Ms. Bork, and all the wonderful staff people that spoke. I really found it extremely interesting, and I learned a lot today. I'm here representing Coalition for Neighborhood Schools, and my four executive members, myself, Lanny Ebenstein, Roseanne Crawford, and Laura Wilson. And we composed this letter, which we just sent it today, about our mission and why I'm here today. We support neighborhood schools. We believe that the neighborhood school is for the vast majority of parents of all income levels, all races, all types, all religions. The neighborhood school is the greatest place to send your kid. It doesn't matter if you're rich or poor. That's the greatest place to go and have a community. And yes, we have lots of other options in our town for those who have the means, and no options for those who don't. Those who don't have means to get out of the public system, go to the public system. Those who have means may leave. They may homeschool, they may go to private school, they may move out of Santa Barbara, and they may go to one of our little boutique schools to get away from their neighborhood school, if they feel like the neighborhood school isn't high quality. Well, those are nice options, but that's not what we believe in. We believe in public schools in your neighborhood. And here's the clincher, that you can walk to. If you can walk to it, it's a neighborhood school. Well, here's the problem. I only have 45 seconds. We don't have schools that you can walk to. This is sort of silly, but this orange area here, there were four schools in the center of our district up until 1880. Those schools are gone. Now we have schools on the periphery, but kids can't walk to them. So we want you to help. What is the expertise of the city? Planning, facilities. And so much has happened in the last 20 years since we started. There's, the news press just closed, there's a huge building there. Nordstrom closed, there's a huge building there. There's so many options. We can have a downtown school. We need your help,
Thank you.
because that's your expertise. Thank you so much.
Kira Push, followed by Zachary Beebe.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kira Push. I'm here speaking today on behalf of Strongtown Santa Barbara, which is a local chapter of a national nonprofit dedicated to promoting more walkable, livable, and fiscally resilient communities. I'm speaking today in support of opening up school grounds for general community drop-in use during school off-hours. Something that was clear from all the presentations given here today is that everyone in the room has a shared goal of improving the quality of life for children in our community. A key component of quality of life is access to outdoor spaces, namely parks and green spaces. Parks are an essential public infrastructure. They play an important role in health and well-being, climate resilience, and community interconnectedness. Excuse me. Everyone in U.S. cities should have access to a quality park within a 10-minute walk of their home. Unfortunately, this is not the case in Santa Barbara. We emailed a public comment prior to this meeting with data and maps, which illustrate the fact that a majority of Santa Barbara's West Side residents in particular live greater than 10 minutes from the nearest park or green space, and a majority of these are of Hispanic and Latino background. This trend reflects one that has long been observed across America, that communities of color on average have of color on average have access to 44% less green space than majority-white neighborhoods. That said, we at Strong Town Santa Barbara are very strongly in support of the proposed pilot program. Opening campuses like Harding and Lacombre is an opportunity to directly address the racial inequity that currently exists here. It was stated in one of the presentations that mental health support is of the utmost importance. Studies repeatedly show that kids with access to outdoor play spaces within close proximity of their homes are happier, healthier, and feel closer and friendlier with their community. The same is true for adults, who would also benefit from having more and more easily accessible green spaces. Opening school grounds to the public during school off-hours will enhance community well-being, which is critical and contributes to the health of the whole student, as was mentioned earlier. I also want to note that there is ample precedence for opening school grounds to the community during school off-hours. In fact, in fact, California has a strong tradition of opening public school facilities for community use after hours, and under state laws such as the California Civic Center Act and the California Community College Act, many school districts throughout the state routinely permit community members access to schools during off-hours, often without any official joint-use agreement. Again, we are in support of the pilot program and would even encourage the school district and city council to broaden the number of schools included in the pilot program by opening all campuses for general community drop-in use, because the community benefits to be gained from making campuses available to the public are significant. Lastly, I just want to say I commend and applaud everyone involved for creating and maintaining programming for students and kids in Santa Barbara. It's important and really valuable work, and I thank you for your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Da'Carri Beebe, followed by Michael Schaumberg. And if you're online and haven't raised your hand yet, you need to do so in the next five minutes, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Da'Carri Beebe. I just recently moved here from Huntsville, Texas. I served as a council member for the last three years prior to moving here. I'm a proponent of having zero police presence in our schools. Why are they there? You all mentioned safety? How are students being kept safe by officers in schools? In Texas, all of my children attended public schools, and one of my youngest children was actually taken from the school by a local police officer to be sold into human trafficking. Unfortunately, I've seen a pattern of this here in this town, not only in schools but in public. You mentioned that 3% to 4% of our students are not being enrolled in schools any longer? Where did they go? They've been human trafficked. I must also mention that police officers, that I'm a, okay, give me a second. Police, I'm a mother of four students who wanted to attend Santa Barbara High School this year. I've served as PTO president at my children's schools in the past, and I don't want a police presence on school campuses to keep my children safe. I hope that the city will choose to end the police activities league. I see it as a way to take advantage of children's innocence rather than act as mentors for them. The police chief is discussing building trust with children through these programs. Isn't, isn't it their job to enforce laws? They don't need to be anywhere near our children unless they've been accused of a crime as minors, the children, I'm specifying, but parents should always be in the child's presence when an officer is there. I, I hope that the city will not agree to, to the joint-use agreement with the school district. For parents, I hope that parents are listening, and I hope that they know that I am concerned for the safety of your children, here in Santa Barbara, specifically in the schools, but also in public. Please do not allow them to participate in the PAL program, and I hope that you'll fight against having police officers present in our schools. I also want to mention the school feeding program. I know you've also mentioned you don't want any trouble on campus after hours. In our former school in Huntsville where my children attended, the schools would hand out SAC dinners directly to the students directly after school so they could go home immediately and be safe. This is a better solution for campus and student protection as well as feeding the kids. Thank you so much for your time today. I hope you have a wonderful day.
Okay, Michael Schaumberg.
My name's Michael Schaumberg. Graduates have to take remedial classes at City College. Are they being graduated without knowing reading, writing, and math? I was at a school board meeting one time, and it was critical race theory, and sitting next to a-
Mr. Schaumberg, we're really discussing the city-
Kids, I'm working on it.
Can you get to that, please? Because I don't want to get into the-
Okay. I'm, I'm very concerned that the education is not up to standards, and I'm concerned that the administration is top-heavy, listening to all of this. It's amazing to me. Anarchy is breaking out in LA. These kids aren't educated. They don't have jobs.
But once again, the cooperate, the, the programming we do between the city and the school board is really why we're here today, and realize there's greater issues out there, but they're not-
Well, I think the issue is really education, and I believe that if you educated the children properly and gave them a huge challenge and taught them, I don't think there would be as much problems. I think they were able to get jobs, I think they were able to live in our community and participate. I guess that's basically it. More education, spend it on, spend it in the classrooms, get the teachers going, you know? Get them paid well, so they can do something. This is my concern.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. We're just trying to contain it to what we do as a-
I understand. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll go online. What have we had, a first speaker online?
Mayor Rouse, we have two individuals online with their hand raised. Our first speaker will be Tristan Miller.
Mr. Miller, you have three minutes at the-
Tristan Miller, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tristan Miller. Sorry, I just started using a circular saw exactly when I tried to give public comment. I am a member of Strong Town Santa Barbara, and I just want to say thank you to all city council members and to everybody who spoke today. Collaboration is key, and it's great to see everybody working together to solve all of these problems. We completely support the pilot program for community access to school grounds at Harding and Lacombre schools, and hopefully, we would like to see that program expanded to all schools. Kids need access to parks and playgrounds, and they thrive from providing outdoor space and being able to play on community equipment and being outside and not on the internet as much. When I was a kid, I spent many of my days playing with my friends after school and on the weekends on school grounds, and that is some of my most favorite memories. And it's shocking to me that that is not a thing that kids can do anymore, and in those particular areas too, kids don't have as much park space that other areas in the, in the city have. And so I hope that that pilot program goes very well, and I hope that, yeah, kids use it and are able to enjoy the outdoor facilities. I also wanted to mention what Oscar Gutierrez mentioned. If we can make it easier to build housing for school employees and teachers, it would help a lot with the SATS staffing issues and make it easier to maintain these programs and continue these programs for everybody. Thank you again for this pilot program to open school grounds. I hope to see it expanded to all schools in the future. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Yvette Peralta. Yvette Peralta, please go ahead.
Dear councilmembers, my name is Yvette Peralta. I'm Director of Annual Programs with Future Leaders of America, and I am here to support the recommendation for Santa Barbara Unified School District Pilot Program to keep school campuses accessible to youth, especially during summer and weekends as much as possible. This will provide children and youth the opportunity to have a safe space where they can have access to green outdoor spaces and playgrounds. I recognize that oftentimes in our communities, school campuses are the only safe space where children can go outside of the home, and I work with a lot of Santa Barbara youth who have expressed interest in having more access to open and safe outdoor spaces. One of my colleagues too, who grew up in Santa Barbara and unfortunately could not be here to speak in support of this recommendation, proudly shared how she used to visit McKinley Elementary with her family to use the swing set. She mentioned that that is one of her favorite childhood memories, and she cherishes it, and knows that other children and youth would appreciate having access to, to open spaces and safe spaces to, to continue to build a family connection and community connection in, in a safe way. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further speakers online?
No further speakers online.
Okay, very good. With that, we'll close public comment. It's back to the board for final comments. I guess I'll just go down the line on the alternate. So Mr. Jordan, I'll start with you.
Good things come to those who wait, huh?
I was really appreciating it.
And you know, when you toss out three, that that just is like waving a red flag in front of the little boy of me, because it's four in our household, although we're a little, a few years ahead of you. So we've had all four children go through every elementary and junior high and high school in town, and I'll lay on that one for a while. I don't think anybody's going to overtake me before I leave. I just want to say thank you both to our staff and to, I'll say that, I'm sorry, Dr. Maldonado, for coming to our house. As I told you before the meeting, I expect the next invite to make us come over there, and happy, happy to do that, but thank you so much to you and the board for, for this meeting. I have not seen one, because the third month after I took office, we, we launched the pandemic, so that came in the way. And I don't really look at this meeting as a negative. There's so many people in the room doing great things, just both sides of this, of the dais, and there's always more work to do, and there's always better work to, to do, and, you know, the needs evolve. So a kid today going to school is not one of my children, who I think we aged out of the last high school almost 10 years ago, and certainly not when I was going to school, and obviously not when my parents were going to school. And so, you know, when you go through those, those exhibits, like the tiers, they really, it's not my life, one, I'm a white semi-middle-class guy who was raised in that type of household and then raised my kids in it, but the, but the stressors and the, the expectations and what comes into play with today's children are much, much different than were around in my time. I just eat a little bunch of ice cream, you know, that's my coping mechanism, but I just think it's, it's so nice to see that you're approaching it from that type of holistic method. I'm going to talk a little bit about your phrase, the whole child, but I, I think that's what it is. And as my colleagues and staff know, I chafe under these type of situations. Here we're in the last 20 minutes, and all we've done is seen a presentation and, and asked questions. I get stares from the, from the city attorney's office when I want to start wandering off and talk about what I really want to talk about, but generally, these, these situations are met with a whole bunch of, here's what we do, and then no, no time is left for, what do you want to do? And what does it take to do it? And most importantly, what's success really going to look like? We're not going to solve that today, and I'd be happy to say, let's meet again soon and, and have a much more flexible agenda where we can really talk about what we want, what you want, what ideas we can come up with, and, and what does that look like and how to, how to chase it. I've been to too many of these, and I just know they're presentation-heavy, and then we're done and, and move on. And I'd also, I just had to have some big picture points. Plenty of people are going to go after me and probably talk about details, but it's clear to me too that the, the people sitting up here and some of the people sitting out there aren't, aren't the end-all to accomplishing what needs to be accomplished, that there is a, there is a responsibility, even a burden, on community members out there to participate and, and effectively help in what we want to accomplish. And one of the most important barriers I see to that is the lack of space to try and succeed, or try and fail, and then be able to try again to succeed. The public discourse these days has become so harsh and damning that, that there's almost a institutional paralysis in taking a chance and trying to do things, because the, the kickback on that is so immediate and so harsh. And I think people need to realize that, given the complexity of all the issues in today's world and the rapid pace at which those evolve, that you have to give space for people to try things and fail or succeed, as long as they're going to try again to succeed. So, so I did like that phrase, the whole, the whole child, and I, regionally, or at least in Santa Barbara and Galito, we've been, even been talking about childcare for working parents, and this to me ties in directly with that, because the whole child really starts as an infant to a toddler, then becomes a school-aged child. And so we may be talking about open playgrounds today, or what else can we do together, but I think the conversation really has to start talking about the, the, the child, the needs of the parents, the community, and the child, once that child is born, and what we can do, what we can do to improve that. Today's demographic, as I said before, is not my demographic, you know, two working parents, neither of them home, maybe one of them or both of them having multiple jobs, eroding financial stability, as somebody made a point out there already on what a parent in the school district looks like. And I think those have to be addressed as we see them, and we have to be willing to take chances and look at that whole child development right from the start. And unfortunately, when you talk about what's it take to get there, it probably talks about money and resources. So I'll just throw a request in from the city's standpoint, and that in all of our talking about 2024, I really haven't seen this kind of subject brought up, but I would suggest we add that to our list as a service and program, whatever that ends up looking like for the discussions, the discussions on 2024. Not that I know what I'm talking about, but it would, it would just shock me if that would not resonate with voters, and I'd be embarrassed to be sitting up here if that was the case. I've, I've actually had a couple of meetings with Veronica Binkley over at Harding. I was lucky enough to be invited to the, not STEM, maybe STEAM event, right, for the outdoor campus, and I've been a couple times to be at a couple of Molly's graduations and for readers, down on the, down on a knee, giving high fives and handing out presents for that. And I would just tell you personally, as a, as a two cents, I will eat up invitations like that and be happy to come out and be involved and engaged to build that relationship with what's going on in the school district rather than wait for annual events like this. And another two cents I would give you publicly too, is that's to come in and abuse us at public comment. Come in and tell us about your programs. My poster child for this is Michael Baker from United Boys and Girls Club. He is here once a month without fail to tell us for three minutes what's going on at the United Boys and Girls Club at that time. Veronica is coming over on the 22nd or the 29th to talk about back-to-school at Harding and the events going on, so it would be great if, particularly the elementary schools, if the other elementary school PTO people or a principal could visit in now and then and just keep us up to date on what's going on. That kind of throws the hook out thus, out there for us to also ask questions and be involved, and I think that's the start of, of that reciprocation, collaboration back and forth. And then, just a, an annoyance that I have, that I think is, that kind of colors the big picture of what happens with our children, and that I wrote disparity, then I crossed it out three times and wrote in inequity, but it's the disparity in local school support resources that happens. My poster child would be any school in the city versus a 93108 school, in terms of what, what the school can generate, what their, what their PTO can generate versus what a 93108 school is generating, and what you're actually seeing for resources in the classroom. I know that actually exists in my life and on the mesa too, because I know there's a stark difference in those resources in the classroom or teacher's aides or supplies between Washington and Monroe. And to the extent that you have the ability to change that, to remedy that, I don't know how, I just know that there's a, there's an inherent inequity taking place there because of, of that dynamic, and that should be addressed. Then finally, with, I, I know Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez was the, kind of the, the start point for this. There might have been another council member too, but to me, again, having this kind of meeting isn't really chasing the, what do we really want and what, what the success look like. So to the extent that a work group comes out of this, happy to participate, you know, that's what I really like to do. Somebody throw the ball, I go chase it. Don't really like sitting here talking about stuff, I want to actually go, go do things. And then just- talking about stuff. I want to actually go, go do things. And then just, I would, I would say there's probably just a ton of people out there in the community already doing complimentary things that are not part of this conversation today. So in my life, that's the Boys and Girls Club, people like True North, Wilderness Youth. Council Member Sneddon had a list of, of other things, too, that, early on in your comments or questions, that were groups out there in the arts or whatever. To me, that, that's, that's, that's part of the back to, these people in this room are not going to solve this problem or get us to where we want to go alone, that there are community groups out there and we need to reach out, reach out and leverage those community groups in places where they're already doing things that are complimentary or actually bring them in, much like on your, your exhibit, maybe with the tiers, where you, you showed some of the groups you were working at. There's many, many, many more out there. And I realize it's work for somebody or work for a bunch of people, but nothing good's really going to happen or nothing better is really going to happen until we start doing the work. So, thanks again for coming. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Gutierrez has to get somewhere, so I'm going to let her go next and I'll be right back. Hey, Mr. Escobedo.
I want to thank the school district cabinet and their staff, Dr. Malonado and the city staff. I, for my comments, I would just, would like to have a draft of the MOU come back to council and to the school board so we can finalize it. And if it's possible, they could come back in January, like our, my colleagues have mentioned, just because of budget issues. If we can get that before our budget season starts, then we can better collaborate and make sure that we are partnering up the way that we should. If that's okay with all of you, I would like to submit that request. Also, I would really would like for Zachary and her team and Dr. Malonado's and her team to really look at how we can better partner in summer enrichment programs. So I know that the school district has a great after-school program, AOK. It's, I've seen it firsthand. It's, it's very successful. And the city's going through a lot of staff, staff-changing budget issues. So maybe if we can, I'm just going to throw it out there, pull out from that after-school activity and really focus in the summer enrichment programs and let the school district kind of take over that summer school, that after-school program, since they are already have a full-on department and have a curriculum going. And then we can better serve in the summer programs with the school district. And that's it.
Very good. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. Thank you to our district staff, city staff. Thank you for those that were involved in organizing this. I know it's no small feat. I have kind of, I thoughts and ideas and still questions in my mind, so I might be a little bit all over the place. But I wanted to start off with what Ms. Edison had said earlier in the presentation. The school district has our kids for 180 days out of the year. And that makes meetings like this so much more important and impactful because it's collaborations like this where we support our youth 365 days out of the year. And it goes even beyond those that are in this room right now. It means we need to be having these same conversations with SBCC, with the county, with Galita, with so many more folks that contribute to supporting our youth. And I just want to say thank you all for being here, for being engaged, asking really good questions, being invested in this because it's really the only way that we're going to be successful is in collaboration. And sometimes it's kind of hard. Sometimes there can be friction, but that's actually a really important part of the process so that we can tease out really good ideas and get to meeting the actual needs. And when I say meeting the actual needs, Mr. Vance had, had talked about design thinking, I think. It's like a model of, of figuring out what collaborations we have, figuring out where do we go? Because there's so many good ideas. We have so many, I have ideas of what I would like to do, but does it serve a need? Have we defined it so we know what we're achieving? Who are we serving? And then what does the evaluation process look going forward? And how do we tweak it so that it can be successful? To Council Member Jordan's point, I think he's totally spot on. Sometimes we feel like we don't have the room to fail. But honestly, falling short is part of the process and that's how we learn and, and get to where we need to go. I'm excited about this pilot program. We're going to learn a lot. Things are going to fall short of what our expectations are, I'm sure of it. But we're going to then take that information, we're going to tweak some stuff, we're going to shift, and we're going to solve for it. I'm, I'm dedicated to that quite a bit and making sure that we do have open spaces for our kids on the West Side, for our families on the West Side. So a couple of things that I'll be looking for is, what are, what are we going to be measuring? We talk a lot about in MTSS, using data to inform our decisions. I think that's an important process of this collaboration as well. With every single collaboration, I'm going to be looking at what data are we collecting? What's the metric for success? And what is the evaluation process moving forward? I want us to continue these meetings and I am kind of challenging staff to put it on the books now. Let's start looking at spring before the budget season so that we have it in our schedules. We know how difficult it was to schedule this one. The sooner that we can do it, the better. For, for me, in looking through some of the recommendations, Council Member Sneddon, thank you so much for bringing up the paid internship opportunities. And that's a discussion that I know is happening at the district, but I, I am interested to learn more about it, about do we set the requirement for whether, for the volunteer hours? Is that us? Is that state? Do we need to do some advocacy with some of our other elected officials? But I, I think that there absolutely is inequities. And when we talk about trying to get kids who are not used to accessing really good opportunities, the library, oh my goodness, if we could have every one of our students working at the library in an internship program, I'd be amazing. Because what comes with those opportunities is not only pay, not only the work experience, but also mentorship. That is a big part of a lot of these paid internship opportunities. So I would challenge the district and the city to try and find as many of these paid internship programs, to, to expose our kids to public service is very, very important. And if we can open up pathways to careers for our students in thinking about, I think, one, that the police department was working with SBCC and working on a dispatch program. We have a need in dispatch. We have, I, when I was on planning commission, public works, building and safety, planning, all of these really good paying jobs. Why not for our kids? And so, that's where collaborations with SBCC comes in. And we broaden this discussion. I know how difficult it is and I share the frustration of only getting a small amount of time to talk about it. It's in a very rigid format. How do we break? Let's get creative. Maybe it's a work group, maybe it's something else. But to really start working through some of these issues, and I know a lot of that falls on staff. And I'm so appreciative of the work that it took to get here and what it's going to take for the next step. And things are not always going to happen as fast as we want, and I'm aware of that. And even with that, still going to continue the conversation and continue to push and push ourselves up here, as well as our staff, to not be stuck in the old way of thinking and to be really creative in how we accomplish these things. Budget's always going to be a consideration. Resources and staffing are always going to be a consideration. How do we work together to solve for those and not stop at those are reasons why we should not do it? And I think for us, it's going to be in partnership with staff leadership in figuring out and having the fortitude to figure out how we pay for these things. Because that is going to be the consideration, I'm sure of it, into the future. But there is a way to get to the solution. A couple of things that I was really excited about, all of the library offerings. I think there's absolutely a complimentary services at the library that supports our new ELA adoption, our curriculum for literacy. And I, I would love to expand on that and take advantage of that in any way possible. I think making sure all of our students have library cards because as Ms. Alvarez pointed out, it is not just books. It's so many resources and so, so much equipment and access to things that I know I didn't have growing up. And I know many of our families didn't even know that they had access to. And it's a financial burden that many can't get over that hurdle. But we have it in our library. And so getting the word out about that is really exciting. And for parks, I think there's a, a great collaboration. If this pilot's going to be successful, we got to activate the spaces. And it has to be through programming. So whether it's school district or Parks and Rec, but I think there's an absolute way to activate those spaces because it's going to take a little while to get the word out for folks that they now have access to green space on the West Side. But if they see soccer games out there, if they see some sort of programming, that's the easiest indication that it, you are welcome on this campus. Come, bring your kids, grab a basketball, do whatever. And so, I'm going to be looking for that as we open up this pilot program on what are we doing to get the word out? And what are we doing to show people that they're welcome there? Let me see. Let me just go through my notes one more time. Yeah, I think, I think that's it. Thank you, everyone, for today. It was really, for me, an enlightening process. I'm hoping that in the future, we'll have more time for discussion about possible collaborations. Now that we have a good primer for what we currently do, moving forward, hopefully we can get some updates on what has happened a year from now and what have we learned and how can we be more successful? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon. Want to go ahead? I was just going to bounce back and forth unless I...
Sure, I like to bounce. Okay. I, I just, this was phenomenal and it was largely missing by not having had one for so long, at least to start the conversation of us understanding the programs of each other and how we can collaborate. And it is sounding like there's consensus up here from the school board, from city council, direction that we would really like to collaborate and amplify programs that we're all offering and find out where those redundancies are so that we can consolidate, but then also amplify for each other. I really think we're all seeing the opportunity of that, of that here. Very excited that everybody came today. I just, I'll just go through my list here quickly of things I support and would like to see moving forward. So definitely updating and renewing the annual operations agreement. I agree that it should come back so that we can all see what it is we're agreeing to and, and make sure that some of the ideas that were in agreement between the both boards and council, that, that we really see those prioritized, hearing that consensus here. I think it's a good idea to look at partnering with art programs, academies, different ways that we can showcase what's happening in our schools through maybe our vacant storefronts or other spaces that are open and available, things that would be no cost, but that could really maybe help activate that. I think that came out today, too, when I, as a parent, I get all these Parents Square notifications about all the things that the school district offers. And I'm very well aware of those. And it wasn't until I came to the city that I learned about all of the incredible things offered by the library and by Parks and Rec. And even if you've been a parent in the past, I thought I knew all the things from when my kids were little. And then there's, it's always evolving and changing. And so I think maybe something like a, a joint newsletter once a year or, you know, twice a year with the joint offerings per age groups through the city and through the school district. Because when you're looking for resources, it's hard as a parent to, to sort of peck through all those different. And, you know, if you have things happening at the same time, at the same different places, you know, that might be also a duplication. So I think that would be just really neat for the community, for them to know what's available to them. You know, if you can have a free meal here or there and what experience might go with that as well. I think that would be really helpful for the whole community. I, I love the sharing of the SORA and the calendar outreach events and maybe having one calendar that's integrated with that, maybe even on Parents Square, you could subscribe to it or not, that, you know, shows the city offerings also, something to really serve the community there. I love the PAL program. I'm just going to say that out loud publicly. I support e-bike education. I've just seen too many times at junior high kids pulling out into traffic at pickup time and they're not aware of the road rules. And whatever we can do as a community, I think the state has not caught up. But we, as a community, really need to work together for the safety of these children who are riding motorized vehicles, really without knowing, I don't think realizing how dangerous it is. I really appreciated in the school district presentation that MTSS, you know, not just the administration, but you had the four different pillars, including community engagement and practice. And it was very outward focused. And I really want to appreciate your mention of trauma-informed practices and restorative practices. I think the more we learn about this and that realize how many in our community are living out trauma responses. And when you mentioned the, the sort of demographic and, and how we're having just more struggling students and families, I think we really need to all be informed about this, not just at an educational level. So that's an inspiration for our city as well. I support the schools being open on the weekends, evenings, summer. I'll give the example of Peabody Charter School, which I realize has its own, you know, separate agreements. But that's a school that's never closed. And sometimes, you know, after Halloween, crazy cleanups have to happen before schools come back in. And very familiar, I was on that board, chair of that board. And yes, there are issues with things that are left behind after weekends. But I want to just highlight that it becomes a community hub and it actually becomes safer when you have people in the neighborhood filtering in, filtering out. I mean, kids aren't going to go there to do nefarious things at 2:00 on an afternoon when there are other, you know, people bringing other people through and it's, it's a hub of activity. And I'm not sure that you actually need to activate the space so much as just allow the community to enjoy it. I'm not giving direction, but just maybe talk to Peabody and see how it is they manage some of those things. I mean, that is a school that serves a demographic that is the same demographic as Santa Barbara, as, you know, 50% Spanish-speaking, 50% below poverty limits. And so there, maybe it's a, maybe it's an opportunity to, to kind of get ideas for how to manage some of those issues that you've alluded to with safety. And, and again, don't want to give a direction on how to manage your asset, the, the schools. And very, I'm hearing that also, that there's concern about extra staffing and, and safety needed. But I just really want to hold that one up as an example of, you know, open spaces, access and community building, those chance conversations you have with people and you learn who's in your neighborhood and grow up together. And, you know, my kids feel free to go there, you know, and, and it's a, it becomes something they want to protect also as it's open to the neighborhood. I'm going to throw this out here. It's not on this agenda, but I'm a big proponent of resilience hubs. I know, I'll just keep mentioning them. I think Peabody's one example that could be. I think Santa Barbara High is another one. Again, I don't, I'm not pretend to tell you how to manage your resources, but a resilience hub, working in conjunction with the city, solar-powered, battery-powered industrial kitchen, a place for medications to be stored in a disaster where people know where they could gather. And again, maybe working with the county, not sure. I just want to keep putting that out there as a possibility. And really want to thank you, both city and school district, for having free, accessible education and programs. I think we're living in an era where access to books is threatened. And I really, really want to appreciate the efforts in access to learning and for all that is provided through these, through these with free-to-the-community resources. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Munoz, you've kind of dominated the conversation, maybe it's your turn.
Hi, thank you so much. I appreciate being part of this conversation and I've learned from the presenters, from Chief of Police Gordon and Ms. Cadiante and Ms. Zachary. I appreciate you sharing, you know, all that you do. I know that you three ladies, you know, lead a lot of effort in our community to make it better and I know that we can collaborate with you going forward, collaborate more, even though of course, you know, as Dr. Maldonado said, you know, she is in conversations with you. This last, gosh, one of the things I was thinking about was with Parks and Rec, you know, just growing up as a kid on the east side, thanks to Park and Rec, that's where I learned how to swim and played tennis, you know, at that time where nobody in my family or certainly my parents had ever been exposed to tennis, you know, things like that. And our, the wonderful parks that we have here in Santa Barbara and all the offerings that are offered to our children now in the community. To, you know, Chief of Police Gordon for having all these different programs under the police department, including career exposure, as you said, like in terms of going to a recruitment experience, just exploring other possibilities that are out there, not just the ones that we think about as like an officer and the people that we know, you know, and seeing more women, more people of color, you know, diverse backgrounds and folks that have possible disabilities and such, to see that that is a possibility, I think is great. And of course, the leadership for youth in both Parks and Rec and the police, you know, law enforcement and stuff is awesome. I'm going to have to talk a little bit about the, you know, with an emphasis on literacy with our libraries. This last weekend, I went to, let's see, it was Saturday, I'm also on the Santa Barbara, the city housing commission, and we have folks there from the library, which was pretty cool. I mean, they had all these books laid out, some of them were in English and Spanish, other ones like they were for different age groups. And they're like, oh, telling folks, you know, grab a book, you know, take a book home with you that you're going to read. And just seeing the joy in their faces was awesome. Now I found out during the meeting here that the Bookmobile, where I learned about my love for books and so forth, is now Library on the Go, which is awesome and how, you know, you have a calendar that folks can look up and have, you know, that exposure to reading. And I was able to participate at McKinley School, seeing the reading ambassadors and just that joy of like how many books kids had read and such. And I think it's wonderful having the English conversation groups that you have. I'd like to see any way that I personally can collaborate with having more volunteers out. I think you mentioned Roosevelt School and just having more volunteers out, you know, if parents speak Spanish, they can, you know, sit with a book and read Spanish to the children. And just have, having seen their mom or dad out there or their older brother or sister, you know, I think is a wonderful idea. So certainly as the school, you know, that's the school district and just as community partners, anything we could do to collaborate, I'd certainly be interested in like a work group and such. So thank you and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Mr. Gutierrez.
I want to thank everyone again for making this happen. I appreciate the kudos, but you know, this was a team effort on the city staff and the school district staff. Mayor Protem Alejandro Gutierrez really was passionate about this. And I appreciate all the hard work. I know having meetings like this is very difficult, so I really appreciate all of you listening to our request and agreeing to collaborate in some way or another. I also want to give credit to the school district because I don't feel like you all get enough credit when it comes to just being the first responders in identifying and treating child abuse. Like I know for a fact that you all have to deal with that on top of everything else that you're doing, you know? And I just want to thank you all for doing that because you don't get enough credit for that. Yeah, as I said earlier, I'm very grateful for the pilot program and as I said, I want more, obviously, not just for my district, I appreciate that obviously, but I want it citywide, I want it countywide. You know, I think it's just something that makes the community such a better place because you talk to, you know, the locals here, we're all really proud of the schools that we came from, you know? I consider myself very lucky to have been able to grow up here because like look where it got me, right? I know some people are probably like, eh, but I appreciate it, you know, especially knowing where my family and my parents came from and the opportunity they didn't have to go to school. So I appreciate allowing the greater community to have access to the campuses because I know how, as I stated, safety, especially children's safety is your number one priorities. So I acknowledge the risk you're taking to allow and grant the general public access to those campuses and facility. And yeah, I want to, for the next conversation, hopefully we can all try to reach out to other outside organizations, whether it's corporate entities that could, you know, hopefully fund some of these extracurricular ideas, whether it's through us directly or to the Santa Barbara Education Foundation or the Fund for Santa Barbara. However, we can get more funding for servicing the children, I think we should all do more for that. Also bring other community members, like Communify, formerly the Community Action Commission, to kind of give us updates about what they're doing to help out the youth in our community. Yeah, I just, I also want to just like volunteer myself. So if it'll help for me to volunteer to help clean up the campuses, if that's allowed, please, I live within walking distance of all three of those schools, so I'm willing to volunteer. And also furthermore, just my position alone, it always bothered me that it wasn't until my senior year in high school that we got to, we got taught how the government works. I always felt like that was so, I know it could be very complicated and it's, at times might not be appropriate for children, but the very basics of like just allowing them to tour facilities like this, like City Hall or the county building, just as kids so that they know that we're here to work for them, you know, as opposed to the other way around. Because for example, every time I meet a teacher, I always say, hey, if you want me to speak to your class or whatever, just let me know. The only kids that have shown up here, and I kid you not, are the Yacht Club kids. Yacht Club kids showed up here for a tour. Not to say that they don't need to be educated on how the government works, but it's just to show you the type of access certain demographics have over others. So we're only here for a few years, right? We might not be reelected or we term out, so use us now. I disagree with the statement that somebody said that this is all the same. We're not the same, look at us, like literally look at us, you know, and your staff as well. Like we're not the same as we were years ago. Like this is, we were put here by the people of this community to represent them and work for them and this is what we're doing. And I appreciate all the hard work that you all do on the city and the school side. And yeah, let's get some of this stuff done.
Okay, Mr. Friedman and then Ms. Alvarez.
All right, thank you. So about 10 years ago, Nicolas Cage and Angelina Jolie starred in a movie called Gone in 60 Seconds. So I'm going to do my best Nicolas Cage impression and be done in 60 seconds. So first, I have two high school kids, in a week from now, that's crazy to me, going to different schools, different cultures at the schools, a lot of similarities, but I'm thankful to have that opportunity to see how the schools, and it gives me the complexity of understanding it. And I learned a lot today about the education that my own two kids are getting. I want to thank Dr. Maldonado and all your staff, City Mr. Bjork and all our staff for putting together a great presentation and working on the collaboration. And for me, getting back to the joint agreement mentioned earlier, Mayor Protem Gutierrez, I appreciate that she raised that as well as getting that done because in the spring, that will get us to where we want to be to have those collaborations so we have a clarity and understanding of what we're doing and how much it's going to cost. And I also want to thank our library, our police department and our parks department. And my time is up. The alarm didn't go, there you go.
And why didn't I think of that myself? That's great. Ms. Alvarez.
Talk about pressure. Well, thank you, first of all, thank you, Dr. Maldonado, Ms. Bjork, and all the staff for all your time. It takes a lot. You did an excellent job. When we were getting ready for this meeting, I asked Dr. Maldonado and Mr. Venz, what's the big idea? What's the takeaway? I want to walk out of this room with a big idea, with a takeaway and that it's time well spent. And in my mind, this was, we took an inventory. Today was take an inventory. What are we doing? What do we need to keep doing, stop doing and start doing? That was the big idea for me today. And on my to-do list, one is a question that I very much like for both organizations to consider, is how can we expand the family literacy and OG readers that, it's a pilot at Roosevelt. I want to see it at all the schools. Kids need to, need help learning to read. We have students who can use the help, so that's one question I would like to pursue more. How can we do better in that? Also on my to-do list is let's explore grants. Let's get together as the two organizations and let's look for grants. I know there's a lot of grants out there that we can potentially take advantage of and if we work together, we're so much better. That's on my to-do list. My to-do list also is to see how we can better calibrate, calibrate our calendars. We have a governance calendar at the school district and we're coming up with a budget season in the spring. Let's start early with our study sessions and what did we learn from today that we can do better? Maybe there's things like we mentioned, duplication of efforts, let's stop doing those. And the other one, of course, is the pilot program to open the campuses. And at the end is, to me, is look where we are. We not only now need a joint use agreement, but most likely we're going to need an MOU that's comprehensive, that's not only use of facilities, but for us to come together and offer services and how we can be so much better as a community. So thank you, everyone, that made this meeting possible. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, and let's keep working hard. There's much work to do ahead of us and I know we can do it. Together we can do it. Thank you.
Madam President, I'll let you back clean up.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure to sit here and share the mic with you and each of you here as well. And thank you to our Santa Barbara Unified staff, great, proud to be part of Santa Barbara USD. Certainly part of the city, it's part of this partnership that we should not essentially, this not be the only time that we get together and have a conversation. And there's many opportunities, we have many meetings. So I think, I appreciate the invitation to come and share things at your meeting and please know that that invitation is open to you as well, as long as you stay within the three minutes. But anyway, so, so I just want to echo all the things that both my colleagues have said with regards to, you know, working together, what we need to do, how we can go. But I would always add that we're in a new generation and each generation has its own struggle of how they deal with things. Sometimes they're a different generation dealing with the same struggles. So it's important for us to look at it through an intergenerational lens of the things that we're offering, things that we hope to do. We want to make sure, yes, as we're sitting here and we're seeing our options from our perspective, we want to make sure that's what our intergenerational folks want. That's what they want and that's the expectation. So I want to make sure that we have the voice of the community and those who we are trying to work for. And yes, we're in these chairs now and so we need to set the foundation for going forward, how, you know, things that need to stay and be sustainable, we need to be willing to take that risk, to set them, be that voice and to be able to push back. And I think it's important to hear, even though we don't want to hear sometimes coming from the public, but it's important to hear the voices because you kind of know what they're thinking. Because I will quote a movie and I'm going to quote one right now, Kathy Bates, who said, "It's your silent thoughts that give me pause. If I don't know what you're saying, you might be thinking anything." So sometimes when we're hearing the voice from the public, that's giving us an insight to what's going on in the public. And then lastly, I would just say that the most important outcome among, you know, agreeing with all the things that we've said here, in addition to those that we want to have an outcome, I think the most important outcome that we need to do is to make sure that we have changed the experience for those who are going to our schools, who are in our city. It's about the experience. Because what do you feel about this, seeing us up here trying to make solutions together? The youth are going to be able to see this, the community's going to be able to see we're working together to do that. Has that changed their view of us? Have they changed that experience of us? If we can change the experience of our kids going to school, being able to have an open community, the community understanding, they might have to come in and to clean up those places and to be able to access those open spaces, we've got to all take care of it, right? So how do we do that? So my most important takeaway, and then I would add, is that we, whatever we're working for, we're going to make sure that it changes the experience for those who are accessing the services.
All right, thanks very much. Well, the one thing I'm pretty clear that we share in common is our real passion to do what's best for our kids. So with that, I believe we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.